Good morning, good morning. Welcome to the hearing on the Committee on Immigration and Children and Youth. At this time, please silence all electronics and do not approach the dais. I repeat, do not approach the dais. If you wish to testify, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. That is testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you need any assistance, please contact the sergeant. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, you may begin.
Good morning. This meeting is called to order. Good morning, everyone. I am Councilmember Alexa Aviles, Chair of the Committee on Immigration. Thank you for joining us today. We will be examining the resources available in New York City for immigrant youth who arrived to the United States. Do we need to introduce the interpreters? Hold on one quick second.
Just do the opening in your language.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
What time you said?
You can do it now. Just interpret in your language.
Buenos dias, buenas tardes, depende de la hora en sus teléfonos. Por favor, silencien sus teléfonos o apáenlos y ningún momento se acerquen al estrado. Si usted necesita someter su testimonio o quiere testificar, por favor hacer que sea un sargento en armas y llene la forma para testigos. Si usted quiere someter el testimonio, solo puede hacer al siguiente correo electrónico: Una vez más, sería testimony@council.nyc.gov. Y bienvenidos a la reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad de Nueva York para el Comité de Inmigración, Infancia y Juventud.
Asalamu alaikum. Janggen fanan, nakasubasi, banglen duyu yenye. Fimne kene, dangnyo si, council meeting, biheosi, afere immigration akhalei iñyosi reumi. Legi nyungleni ye gal kufekene dangame telephone oyudeme nonu, munga kupe afere poru banya disturb, nyifine kene. Sufekene tamid dangabuka testify, te wuganga wahni. Munga kobinda si keti joko gaye nyumun kojohet, te wuke nyo degeñga efimne kene. So nyungleni ye gal sufekene kubugana wah tamid, munga ayonisa tax lifinbi: Benenbi, munga korep@council.nyc.gov. Legi nyungleni ye gal fimne kene nyungleni gerem ku nyifite wetey, te nyungleni ye gal watiwati kuyore telephone, nanga kupesa telephone be fimne kene, te lo amgawa kogaibul nyo degeñsi gaye. Nyungleni newyo.
Bonjour. Vous êtes le bienvenu aujourd'hui à la réunion du Conseil de la Ville de New York, la Comité de l'Immigration des Enfants et de la Jeunesse. À ce moment, vousye mettre tous les téléphones portables, appareils téléphoniques sous silence afin de minimiser les perturbations tout au long de l'audience. Si vous avez témoigné, veuillez remplir une fiche de témoins auprès du Sang Jordan. Si vous avez un témoignage que vous souhaitez soumettre au dossier, vous pouvez le faire par courrier électronique à testimony@conseil.nyc.gov. Encore une fois, vous pouvez le soumettre au dossier. Vous pouvez le faire par courrier électronique à testimony@conseil.nyc.gov. Si vous avez besoin d'un appareil de traduction, veuillez consulter Sang Jordan pour la substance. À tout moment de cette audience, il ne faut pas rapprocher donc les membres. Merci pour votre coopération.
Allo, ndjarama mingokadejalo handogomi wonata interprete mongonge pular. Donk ondjarama bui beyelteniki onko adiondo hande. Hande ko adiondo, kofi wadogol mirinonka New York City Council, efi immigration, fi paikui. Fiondo do ninini, hibe landi onyon, nanin telephone gi mondi info, wadon dumajening hara onbataki kadiko, hara onbataki bega few. Sidonfala témoignugal argol wola, hidonwavi arde. Batodon inete do serjan hono, ATM on ma yahon jonnon témoignouma. Témoignayen gi mondi kakoko inete testimony@council.nyc.gov. E sidonfala kadhi hono, batodon inete don toujours serjan hara onyegitase. Don bezoni kaloko bezoni don, tam wotan ondjarama fi coopération. Merci.
Great, thank you. As you have just seen, we have simultaneous interpretation available to the public to listen to today's hearing in the following languages: French, Fulani, Spanish, and Walaf. So today, we will be examining the resources available -- excuse me -- resources available in New York City for immigrant youth who have arrived to the United States as unaccompanied children, or UACs. I'd like to begin by thanking my co-chair, Councilmember Althea Stevens, Chair of the Committee on Children and Youth, for co-chairing this hearing today. I'd also like to thank the representatives from the administration, members of the public, and my committee colleagues who have joined us here today. And I'd like to recognize Councilmembers De La Rosa, Councilmember Osay, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Williams, and Councilmember Lee. Thank you for joining us today. The Committee on Immigration and the Committee on Children and Youth are holding a timely and important hearing today to evaluate the resources our city has made available to immigrant youth who have arrived to the United States as UACs. New York City and the surrounding jurisdictions routinely receive a number of newly arrived children who are placed with family members or community members. In federal fiscal year 2014, around the time of the Committee on Immigration's last-held hearing specifically on this topic, New York City received at least 2,009 children, and Nassau and Suffolk Counties respectively received 1,446 and 1,600. These were the largest numbers of any jurisdiction in the country, except Harris County, Texas, and Los Angeles County, California. By the way of comparison, between October 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2024 alone, New York City welcomed 2,873 UACs who were released to sponsoring families. We know that children and youth are settling in New York City, are an enormous gift to our city and region, and we celebrate, among other things, the public school enrollment boom that has been born from the arrival of new immigrant students. If our city provides these children and youth the conditions they need to flourish, they will be among our city's most next generation of creators, workers, and leaders. This hearing is an opportunity to do just that: assess the resources and services New York City provides to ensure that immigrant youth thrive here. In this regard, it is instructive to examine past efforts of this council and our city to welcome immigrant youth. In 2014, New York City witnessed an influx of UACs, fleeing dangerous and often deadly conditions in their homes and arriving at our city's doorstep. These children had no access to legal support and representation when appearing in New York's immigration courts. With the support of incredible community organizations, the city council responded to these needs by launching the Unaccompanied Minors Initiative. This initiative has enabled council partners, the Immigrant Children Advocates Relief Effort, or ICARE, to provide vital legal services to these children and youth. In addition to legal services, the council's initiative has also provided support for unaccompanied children beyond the courtroom by coordinating referrals and social services such as health and educational supports to the extent possible. We look forward to hearing testimony from the advocates about the council's Unaccompanied Minors Initiative and the wraparound resources and services that are being provided to these children and youth. And we are immensely grateful for their colossal efforts. We want to make sure that the city does not forget the lessons of the past. Advocates have noted that gaps in services remain for immigrant youth who arrive in the U.S. as UACs. Many of these children and youth arrive having fled dangerous, violent conditions in their home countries and have undertaken harrowing journeys to seek safety in the United States. There is a growing demand for age-appropriate shelter in our city, which my co-chair, Councilmember Stevens, will discuss at greater length. In addition, immigrant youth who have arrived as UACs may be eligible for a range of immigration statuses, including special immigrant juvenile status, U or T visas, or asylum, all of which would entail a pathway to lawful permanent residency and ultimately citizenship. For this process to succeed, immigrant youth would require timely legal services to navigate the Byzantine immigration bureaucracy and its attendant deadlines and pitfalls. When simply missing a deadline can cause a child to miss out on a pathway to lawful permanent residency status and citizenship, it is clear that these children, many of whom are learning to maneuver a new country, let alone a notoriously complex legal system, must be connected with trauma-informed legal services and wraparound supports, stability and continuity of care, as well as expertise and experience in immigration law, as are essential in this context. For these reasons, we're eager to hear how the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs serves as a subject matter expert and facilitator of connections to resources on legal services, education, mental health, and so much more. We are also keen to learn of how the Office of Asylum Secur Operations is approaching legal services for children, mindful that continuity of care, as opposed to a pro se model, is the gold standard for continuing to serve this vulnerable population. We look forward to hearing from the administration about how we can work collectively to ensure that these children and youth who need access to resources can thrive in our city. The Committee on Immigration will also hear the following legislation: Resolution 576, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farías, which calls on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass, and the governor to sign legislation amending the tax law to authorize that New York City to offer a tax credit for businesses to incentivize the creation of workforce development and training programs for newly arrived immigrants. I look forward to hearing more about this bill, of which I am a proud co-sponsor. I would also like to thank the committee staff for their work on this hearing, including Nicole Kata, Legislative Council, Rebecca Barilla, Policy Analyst, Carolina Gill, Principal Capital Analyst, and Florentine Cabor, Unit Head. Lastly, I'd also like to thank my staff: Chief of Staff Edward Serna, and Legislative and Budget Director Christina Botejo, and everyone who is working in the background to make sure these hearings run smoothly. I will now turn it over to my co-chair, Councilmember Stevens. And just before I do that, I have to make a special note here that I'm deeply disappointed we don't have the leadership of the agencies that are presenting here today. This seems to be a recurring theme, and I'd like to, for the record, note that it is deeply disappointing when we are discussing issues of such gravity that the leadership of the agencies don't seem to be able to make it here. I thank the staff for holding that water and being here and being present, but for the record, I must make a note of it. Chair Stevens?
Thank you. And I want to say thank you for everyone who stayed. I know there was some miscommunication about time, and we are starting late, but thank you all for being here today. So, good afternoon and welcome to today's hearing on resources for immigrant youth who arrived to the United States as unaccompanied children. I am Althea Stevens, Chair of Children and Youth Services. I am joined by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, Chair of Immigration Committee. Today, we will be discussing the growing crisis facing the surge of unaccompanied minor youth. Navigating in a country without proper resources or support network leaves many youth a complex set of challenges to face. They often arrive traumatized, having fled violence, poverty, and instability, and now they find themselves struggling to meet their most basic need, including shelter. Ensuring that youths have access to safe, age-appropriate housing is the fundamental to their well-being. While DYC D extended the number of shelter beds for older youth in 2019, the reality is clear: it is not enough. In the first half of this year alone, over 1,100 youth ages 16 to 24 were turned away due to the lack of space, a fourfold increase from the same period year last year. While the Adams Administration has taken steps in the right direction by providing migrant youth 18 to 23 with 60 days of shelter, there is no requirement for those age groups to be placed in youth facilities. As a result, many of those vulnerable youths are being placed in adult shelters where there are lack of access to specialized supports and resources that are desperately needed. We also cannot ignore the undeniable connection between the runaway and homeless youth system and the foster care system. Oftentimes, young people end up in DYC shelters coming from foster care. And we have seen a worrying number increase of teens entering care under destitute minors petitions. This rise is an 8% increase in fiscal year 2024, has been partly driven by the surge of unaccompanied migrant youth arriving in the city without family connections. ACS and DYC D must coordinate their efforts to ensure those youths are not just provided shelter, but connected to comprehensive services that address their unique needs, whether this is mental health support, legal support, education, or job training. I would like to thank the committee staff, Christina and Elizabeth, for their hard work in preparing for this hearing, and my entire team back at District 16. Now, I would like to turn it back to Councilmember Aviles.
Thank you, Chair Stevens. We will now hear from a panel of organizations serving immigrant youth who arrive in the United States as unaccompanied children, and then we will hear from the administration. If we could have Jamie Polovich, Kimberly Schwartz, Sierra Kraft, Mamadou, and Adam Abah. Great. Thank you so much for participating in this panel. I guess we can start with you, Jamie.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Polovich. I use she/her pronouns, and I am the supervisor of the Expediting New Arrivals Community Transition Team, otherwise known as ENACT, at Coalition for the Homeless. I was previously with Coalition for Homeless Youth. Thank you to the chairs and the rest of the committee staff for holding this important hearing and providing the opportunity to testify about resources for immigrant youth who arrived in the United States as unaccompanied children. In addition to its advocacy and programming on behalf of homeless individuals and families, the Coalition for the Homeless is the plaintiff in the historic Callahan versus Carey case, which established the legal right to shelter in New York City. In March, the Coalition in New York City entered into a settlement agreement in the Callahan case that, among other things, extends the Coalition's monitoring role to sites serving single new adult arrivals who entered the country on or after March 15th, 2022, and are afraid to return to their home country. The ENACT team oversees the city's compliance with this settlement. According to the Comptroller's Office, as of September 15th, the city had approximately 62,000 people seeking asylum in city-funded shelters. And as of last week, City Hall reported there are roughly 650 unaccompanied youth ages 18 to 20 in the new arrival shelters. However, the city does not track or report data on the number of unaccompanied minors that they are seeing across systems. Over the past two years, I have personally witnessed the city fail to not only meet the needs of unaccompanied youth new arrivals, but also fail to even acknowledge their existence in any meaningful way. A primary failure is ACS's persistent denying destitute minors the care and services they are entitled to, which has forced them to survive on the streets and to reside in single adult new arrival shelters, which are only authorized to serve single adults and adult families and are woefully inadequate to meet the young people's needs. This is especially given the case due to what Councilwoman Stevens already highlighted with the DYC D Runaway and Homeless Youth Programs reaching historic capacity on a nightly basis and youth being turned away. Another alarming situation is that youth under the age of 16 are precluded from the Runaway and Homeless Youth Shelter Programs due to restrictions imposed by contractual obligations by DYC D. This leaves younger unaccompanied minors particularly vulnerable to the adult new arrival shelters or left to fend for themselves. And although DYC D has, for the most part, continued to uphold priority placement for minors that was established by a now-expired legal aid settlement, in practice, DYC D is ensuring that 16- and 17-year-olds are prioritized for beds by asking programs to discharge youth over 18 to make room for the minors, even if they have nowhere else to go. All of these unfortunate realities were created by the city, and the city has the power to address them if they wanted to. The experience of new arrival youth highlights the need for written policies that need to be accessible to advocates and the public to ensure the protection and safety of unaccompanied youth arriving alone here in New York City. In addition to policy recommendations, the Coalition and Legal Aid Society outline in our testimonies that our recommendations are not exhaustive of all that should be done to adequately support this population, and that the city needs to establish a working group to do a deeper dive into what is needed and address those needs accordingly. I'm going to outline four recommendations. The first is that New York City must allocate appropriate resources to support and protect immigrant youth. This includes the city allocating more funding to DYC D to increase the number of beds available in their Runaway and Homeless Youth Programs so that all 16- and 17-year-olds seeking placement can be placed, even if it is just while they're waiting a transition into ACS's care. And then, in addition, DYC D needs to ensure that all new programming that is bought online to serve runaway and homeless youth does not have a minimum age requirement of 16 years old. And we ask the city council to introduce local legislation to mandate that any new DYC D Runaway and Homeless Youth contracts eliminate lower age restrictions in line with state law. Number two is regarding training. It is imperative that the city implement programming for staff of all city agencies that might interact with immigrant youth geared towards supporting this population. Such programming must include implicit bias training, particularly with regard to the adultification of Black children, as well as ensuring specifically that ACS take a consistent approach to requests for documentation, when they are referred, young people are referred as destitute children. The third recommendation is that we need to ensure that shelters are appropriately identifying young people. We ask that city council take the shelter case management system to task by ensuring they include a number of steps to ensure that unaccompanied minors are identified when they present at the new arrival center or re-ticketing or staying in new arrival shelters. It is crucial that case managers understand that trust must be fostered with young people to ensure accurate reporting of their ages. And then, the last recommendation is regarding language access. The city must ensure that there is meaningful language access provided to new arrival youth. Youth are quite often forced to attempt communication in a dialect that is not their own, creating confusion and misunderstanding regarding their needs and wishes, including any desire to go into ACS care. This is particularly the case for youth from West Africa, when, for example, youth who speak Guinean Pular are provided only a Senegalese Pular interpreter. In addition to all of those recommendations, the city overall must begin to track and report the number of youth identified as being destitute minors in order to better assess the demand for services to this population. ACS must specifically begin tracking and reporting the number of destitute child referrals, including data regarding the referral source, the number of referred children who are unaccompanied migrant children, the countries of origin of referred children and youth, the languages spoken by each referred children and youth, the ages of referred children and youth, and the number of destitute children accepted into care by ACS. In conclusion, I want to thank the council again for holding this important hearing and your longstanding commitment to this work. The Legal Aid Society and the Coalition for the Homeless will be submitting joint written testimony, and I'm happy to answer any questions relating to my testimony or my previous role.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Schwartz, and I am a staff attorney in the Special Litigation and Law Reform Unit at the Juvenile Rights Practice of the Legal Aid Society. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. Imagine you are a teenage boy. You should be in school, and you should be plotting the next time you get to hang out and laugh with your friends. Instead, your community is in shambles. You've arrived home to find that your house with your family in it has been bombed. A trusted adult hands you some documents with a birth date that's not yours, making you over 18, and tells you to get out of here and save yourself. So, you embark on a harrowing journey spanning months in more countries than you can count on one hand. You've seen and experienced things that you shouldn't have seen at your age. Then you finally make it. You're in the United States where you think you're finally safe and free, able to start a new life and get the education you always wanted. Instead, you're forced to remain in a cage, bouncing between different immigration detention centers for several more months before being sent to New York City. You think this is finally it, you will finally be safe. But you find that some people don't believe that you're the age that you say you are because those papers you had no choice but to use in order to survive. Those that do believe you say they've done all that they can. Your only refuge is a cot surrounded by adult men you don't know. You continue to be treated like an adult when really you're just a kid in need of a loving and supportive home. This story and those similar to it reflect the experiences of so many immigrant youth who land in our city. Although the Legal Aid Society laws efforts to reduce the number of poor, Black, and Latin youth in foster care, such efforts should not be at the expense of those youth who have nowhere else to turn. Over the last several months, the Legal Aid Society has received an uptick in referrals for unaccompanied minors being refused care from the Administration for Children Services. Many of these youth are newly arrived children from West Africa, some of whom use documents falsified to make them over the age of 18 so that they could escape the dangerous conditions of their home countries and travel to the United States on their own. In such cases, ACS has initially failed to credit the youth's own statements regarding their age, including reasonable explanations provided regarding the use of falsified documents. And ACS has improperly contacted the United States Department of State for verification, despite the fact that the State Department relies on documents used to enter the country and therefore cannot actually verify an individual's age. Although the Legal Aid Society has generally been successful in advocating with ACS to properly determine that these youth are destitute children, the city's failure to put a system in place to address the needs of children like them created unnecessary obstacles and undue delay to the detriment of these children. As we will lay out in our written testimony, New York has implemented a statutory scheme authorizing the care of destitute children. Today, I will present but a number of policy recommendations and resource recommendations, and as Ms. Polovich stated, these do not encompass all that can be done to serve this population. As it stands, ACS refuses to investigate referrals of destitute children unless a report is made to the state central registry. This is despite the fact that neither statute nor regulation mandates a call to the SCR before the commissioner can take action to meet his obligation to destitute children. It is also worth highlighting that multiple reports have to be made to the SCR before a case is finalized. before a case is finally accepted for investigation. Such a practice creates an unnecessary burden on those assisting immigrant youth, including other city agency staff, and contributes to significant delays in getting these children into A C S's care and custody. Accordingly, to streamline referrals of minor immigrant youth into, to A C S, A C S must create a designated team for destitute child referrals and make the contact information for that team available to shelter staff, staff of other city agencies, community organizations, and advocates. It is crucial that city council also hold A C S accountable for taking a child-centered approach whenever there exist conflicting documents regarding a youth's age. Importantly, the reality is that many migrant children present travel documents with false birthdays when they flee dangerous conditions in their home countries and travel unaccompanied by an adult. Therefore, A C S must give these documents the appropriate weight, but they should heavily credit the youth's own statements, particularly when such an explanation is offered. Additionally, because A C S is obligated to act in the best interests of the child, not only should A C S refrain from requiring the youth to submit to invasive bone density testing as we've seen requested in cases in the past, but A C S must absolutely cease its practice of contacting the U.S. Department of State in an effort to verify children's birth dates. As I stated before, the State Department often relies on false documentation that was procured as a means of survival so that the youth could escape the dangerous conditions of their home country. And so the communication of the State Department ultimately fails to provide any meaningful verification of the young person's true age. But of grave concern is the risk of danger that such a practice poses to the young person's family remaining back home and on the young person, him or herself, should he be forced, he or she be forced to return. Further, A C S must provide appropriate language assistance services to those youth with limited English proficiency and those services must be in the youth's native dialect. With regard to services, I reiterate Ms. Pulovich's recommendation that the city and A C S specifically begin tracking and reporting the number of youth identified as minors without adult caretakers. And in addition to those recommendations, while the mayor's office has allocated funding to legal clinics assisting asylum seekers in preparing their asylum applications in order to meet filing deadlines imposed by the U.S. government, many of them remain unrepresented and are forced to navigate an incredibly complex system of laws and regulations and leaving them unable to meaningfully defend themselves against possible orders or threats of deportation. Therefore, particularly given the special vulnerability immigrant youth face in removal, also known as deportation proceedings, and the potential for rapidly approaching deadlines for immigration applications such as asylum, which could be one year, and special immigrant juvenile status, which is up till the age of twenty-one, it is imperative that the city allocate additional funding to immigration legal service providers so that they can provide meaningful and ongoing representation to this vulnerable population, including designated funding for youth in the foster care system. While older youth are being left to the wayside, poor immigrant families are also being needlessly ensnared by the family policing system. So the Legal Aid Society urges the New York City Council to call a separate hearing to also delve more deeply into the plight of recently arrived immigrant families. So in our-
I'm sorry, if you can summarize a little bit because we have a panel still to go.
Yes, I was just about to wrap up. Our recommendations therein are in our written testimony, but we just wanted to direct your attention to that portion of our testimony as well, where we will be sharing some of our significant concerns regarding this population. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you Chairperson Aviles and Chairperson Stevens and members of the Committees on Immigration and Children and Youth for the opportunity to speak today and for holding this important hearing. My name is Sierra Kraft and I'm the Executive Director of iCare. We're a coalition of legal service organizations providing free legal representation to unaccompanied children facing deportation in New York City. Unaccompanied children are some of the most vulnerable members of our community. Many have fled unimaginable violence, trafficking, and instability, traveling without their parents to seek safety and protection here in New York. But the moment they arrive, they're placed in deportation proceedings, expected to defend themselves in a complex and intimidating immigration system without the right to an attorney. Even adults struggle to navigate this overwhelming system. How can we expect children to manage it on their own? I recently sat in immigration court and saw two young brothers from El Salvador, ages two and six, sitting at a table before a judge expected to represent themselves. The judge gave them a continuance and urged the family to find an attorney, warning that without one, the boys would likely be ordered removed. After the hearing, I spoke with their family and they told me they had been searching for an attorney for over a year. I could sense their fear and it was truly a heartbreaking moment. No child should have to face this immigration court alone. And access to an attorney isn't just helpful, it can mean the difference between life and death. Without representation, these children stand only a fifteen percent chance of winning their cases and this can result in getting deported back to dangerous conditions where their safeties, safety and their lives are at risk. But with a trained lawyer by their side, those odds improve dramatically. Children supported by iCare attorneys have over a ninety percent success rate, giving them a real chance to stay and build bright futures here in New York. While the administration's response to the broader influx of asylum seekers has been setting up pro se legal clinics, these models are not appropriate for children. Children cannot be expected to represent themselves. They need full representation from experienced attorneys who can guide them through the complicated laws and procedures and without it, their cases are almost impossible to win. New York continues to rank fourth in the, in the country for the number of unaccompanied children with more than eight thousand released to sponsors every year, but the resources needed to serve them have not kept pace. Collaboratives like iCare, which focus specifically on serving unaccompanied minors, have not seen an increase in funding in five years, even as the number of children needing legal services has grown exponentially. This year, iCare's Coalition of Seven Legal Service Providers requested funding to increase the number of legal screenings, direct representation, and know your rights trainings. Yet despite the growing waitlist and overwhelming demand, we were not, we were approved for far less than what's needed to meet the, fully meet the need. And without additional support, more children will be up against the system alone and likely fall through the cracks. The challenges we face aren't just about funding. The attorneys working on the front lines of this issue are also stretched thin. Providers are managing overwhelming caseloads while grappling with vicarious trauma, burnout, and low wages. High turnover and staffing shortages make it difficult to maintain the expertise needed to support these children effectively. What we need is long-term solutions to build capacity, such as investing in multi-year funding, expanding strategic programs to retain experienced attorneys through competitive pay, and scaling resources for collaboratives. And without these investments, too many children will age out of eligibility for protections like special immigrant juvenile status or simply remain undocumented and being forced to live in the shadows. Collaboratives like iCare are lifelines for these children and since our founding, we've supported over fourteen thousand young people, offering not just critical legal representation, but also case management that helps them build stable lives in a city they now call home. But to continue this work and keep up with the growing demand, we need the city and this administration to prioritize additional funding specifically for unaccompanied minors, not only for legal services, but for case management. These wraparound services ensure they have the support they need to thrive beyond winning their legal cases. We urge city council to invest in legal services to prevent unnecessary deportation and ensure that every child has access to a skilled attorney. And with your support, we can make sure that no child has to face this process alone. Thank you for your tireless efforts and advocacy to champion the rights of immigrant children. We look forward to our continued partnership and ensuring we live our values as a sanctuary city. Thank you again for putting together this hearing and for your ongoing commitment to supporting these vulnerable members of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having this hearing. My name is Adama Ba, founder and executive director of Africana. The arrival of minors to New York City is not a new thing, but what is alarming is how the current administration has chosen, chosen to ignore the growing need for proper support over the past two years. Personally, I have welcomed thousands of these minors and I'm deeply grateful to people like Jamie who have consistently supported us. Many of these minors that I've encountered come from the African continent and some from South and Central America, Turkish and Afghans, while others are Chinese nationals who cross the border undetected. These are vulnerable children and we've been raising concerns about their cases since they arrived. Yet grassroots organizations like Africana have been overwhelmed by the lack of governmental action to address these needs. We need urgent action now. I fear the day when I receive a call informing me that one of these children have taken their own life due to the lack of mental health support. These children are at risk of being trafficked, assaulted, or even disappearing without a trace. The trauma they endured is unimaginable and yet we are failing them. We are missing critical language access and cultural competency to guide them through their adjustment to life here. These children are our future leaders, but we have left them in crisis. I have personally stepped in countless times to translate for these children. One question that always breaks my heart is when they ask them what they want to be, they respond, "I've never been asked. Whatever you think is best for me, I'll do." These are children who have witnessed genocide, rape, persecution, and government corruption. Yet they are living in some of the most vulnerable corners of our city, invisible to most. I have found minors in mosques blending with worshippers just so no one will notice their age. I beg you, do not let these children slip through the cracks any longer. I cannot describe the pain of holding a young girl who trembles with fear after being raped by soldiers in her home country with nowhere safe to go. Fortunately, that young girl has been reunited with her family, but not all children are lucky. Many would prefer to be in the care of A C S sheltered in building rather than left to survive in a cold. It has been two years, we cannot wait any longer. I also want to thank the D Y C D staff who have gone above and beyond at sites, cooking culturally sensitive food, learning the children's languages, and connecting to community support like Africana. For the last two years, we've been asking City Hall to create a twenty-four hour D Y C D drop-in center for unaccompanied minors and we warn them of the increasing numbers of arriving in N Y C. Africana has created safe space for these children without any funding and we've lost count of how many unaccompanied minors have shown up at our doors seeking help. Our office remains open seven days a week with volunteers staff trained to support unaccompanied minors, but we cannot do this alone. I must reiterate our request for a twenty-four hour drop-in site that welcomes unaccompanied minors with staff who are native speakers of their languages and culturally competent. Lastly, I want to address the involvement of the Mayor's Office International Affairs and contacting embassies to obtain documents for unaccompanied youth. This is concerning for the children here and for the families they left behind. We do not know the horrors these children fled from and alerting embassies risks exposing them to harm. In one case, client B and a minor who's fifteen, Africana intervened when the family of the minor extorted him for money in exchange for his original document. We were able to secure documents he needed without revealing his whereabouts and he is now safe. We risk international complications if embassies seek to return their nationals. As we saw in a Cuban national in two thousand, Ilhan Gonzalez, who was eventually extradited back to Cuba. The city government needs to work with organizations in the U.S. and abroad to address these issues. These are all, there are also thousands of minors in H R K who are in fact children. Their smugglers altered their passports to help them escape their countries. Some of these children are young as thirteen years old and despite undergoing bone density tests, are presenting other documents to prove their age. City agencies do not believe them. We have left them to survive on their own. We need more beds at eighteen to twenty-four years old in D Y C D as D Y C D has done the best at addressing these needs, providing culturally sensitive food and enrolling them in school and sending them to us for additional emotional support. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mamadu Diallo and I will be reading Mamadu's written statement. And first of all, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to testify in front of you. And also, I'm the Director of Operations at Africana. Adama Ba is our founder here. My name is Mamadu. I'm seventeen years old. When I, when I arrived in New York City in twenty twenty-four, I was sent from Roosevelt to Randall's Island. I was scared. This huge cold place offered, offered no help, just isolation. But then I heard voices speaking Pular, my native language, and I clung to them for support. They told me what everyone already knew. There is no real help at Randall's Island. I didn't enroll in school because I didn't even know how. When my thirty days in the shelter ended, I tried to do, I tried to go to San Brigitte, only to be turned away because I was missing a shot. They told me to go back to the Roosevelt Hotel. When I got to the Roosevelt Hotel, a nurse looked at my passport and made a call. Suddenly, people were gathering, whispering around me, and I had no idea what was happening. They sent me upstairs and after a while, the police arrived. I didn't speak English and I was terrified. I thought I had done something wrong. They took me to the hospital for tests and brought me back to Roosevelt, where a staff suggested I call a woman named Adama, someone who helps in cases like mine. I had never met Adama, but I had heard how she had helped so many others. I was sitting there scared and confused as people talked about me. Then Adama called me and told me they had called the police on me because I was accused of being an impersonator. She then connected me with a woman named Jamie. After hours of waiting, they put me in a cab and sent me to the Bronx. I had no idea where I was going or why. Later, a woman in a hijab walked me, speaking in my native language. She introduced herself as Adama, the woman I had spoken to on the phone. She told me A C S didn't believe I was seventeen and couldn't help me, but she and Jamie were fighting for my case. She asked if she could go through my bag and I agreed. She took pictures of my documents, always in conversation with Jamie. I remember when A C S arrived. They questioned me and took me to the hospital for yet another exam. I told A C S I was seventeen years old and that I needed help. I showed them a copy of my passport, my birth certificate, and my W H O vaccination card, World Health Organization vaccination card, that all showed I was seventeen, but they did not believe me. They said they spoke to ICE, Immigration, and they said I was lying. I felt confused, scared, and hopeless. Eventually, I was sent to a new shelter where Jamie had managed to secure me a bed. After five months, A C S finally believed me that I was seventeen and I agreed to take, sorry. After five months, A C S finally believed me that I was seventeen and agreed to take me into care. In those five months, they did nothing to help me and accused me of being a liar. Now, even though they agreed to make me, to take me into foster care, I'm still at the shelter. I stayed in touch with Adama and she invited me to Africana's Harlem office, a place she promised was safe where I would find others like me. And she was right. I found many people my age trapped in the same circumstances. I didn't know how to enroll in school, but Adama connected me with someone who helped me through the process. I had nowhere else to go, so I started going to Africana every day. Adama introduced me to Kaba, a Mauritanian asylum seeker who looks out for me, buys me food and makes sure I'm okay. Now, I help at Africana by running the food pantry where we feed many people and I receive a stipend for my work. I need a lawyer and Jamie, I needed a lawyer and Jamie got me one from Legal Aid. I rely on Jamie, Adama, and everyone at Africana for everything. I came to America alone with no family, but at Africana, I've found a new family. If I need clothes, shoes, or permission slips, or permission slips signed for my school, I go to Africana. All of us do. We are part of the soccer program and other activities and they ensure we have legal representation. When I meet others like me, I always tell them to go to Africana. I either take them myself or give them the address. In my shelter, no one speaks our language. When there is an emergency, we call Africana to translate. Even at the hospital, we rely on Africana's staff to help us understand. I'm so grateful to Africana, to Jamie, and to my lawyer Daniela for everything they have done. But we need more help. When I arrived in New York City in early twenty twenty-four, I was sent to Randall's Island, which is an adult shelter and I'm a child. I was scared in, in a place with no help, just isolation. We didn't come to America because we wanted to. We came because we had no choice. Africana is helping us survive, survive, but we need better treatment. Please help us. There are so many young kids like me, some in shelters, others are, are on the streets. Every sixty days, we have to renew our shelter stay, which makes it hard to focus on school. Attendance is everything and when you are trying to learn English or attend after-school programs, missing days is devastating. I'm lucky, but not everyone is. Not everyone has someone to help them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Please express our sincerest thanks for sharing your story and experience here. And it's unfortunate that you have experienced so many policy failures, and I'm deeply grateful that you found Africana and many of the folks at the DAS to provide you support. We can and must do better.
In all of the facilities, you mentioned no one speaks his language at this current facility. Has that been the circumstance since he's been in the different places?
I'm sorry, my name is Mamadou as well. Mamadou here? Okay, Mamadou. There you go, okay. Thank you. Yes, in all those facilities, nobody spoke my language. The staff members, none of them spoke my language.
Can I ask one of, maybe two of the other panelists, have you seen cases similar to this? Can you give us a little bit of experience around this?
I mean, particularly in my previous role, I've seen a lot of cases like this, and they usually play out very similar to what was just explained was his situation, which I was also involved in, where a young person finds an advocate or another trusted adult in the community. They're not being identified through any systems or government agencies that are actually tasked with doing this work. And then they would reach out to me when I was previously at the Coalition for Homeless Youth, and then we would advocate with both ACS to have them taken into care as destitute minors, and also with the DYCD Runaway Homeless Youth Providers to provide immediate support, whether it was at a drop-in center or shelter. And I think that one of the most concerning things that we've seen a pattern of, which has been talked about here, is just ACS's approach of not believing young people, and seems like overwhelmingly they are trying to do everything to prove the young people ineligible for services, as opposed to welcoming them with trust, right? That their stories are real and their experiences are valid, and then trying to work to advocate to make them eligible for services. And we've seen that consistently, and especially with telling the young people that their documentation isn't valid, that they are lying. Those are constant things that come up, that young people are being told by child protective service workers. And there's also no consistency in what documentation they're referring to. We've seen young people whose passports indicate that they are minors, and there's clerical errors at the birth border where there are things like notice-to-appear tickets have the same month, day, but a different year, making them 18 or older. When all their other documents make them minors, ACS refuses to accept them as minors. Then we've seen young people whose passports were falsified so that they could flee, but all their other documents, birth certificates from their home country, indicate that they are in fact minors, and then ACS does not take them. And so there's also just no consistency in what documentation they're saying young people need. And like my partner at the Legal Aid Society testified to, it's not in statute or regulation anywhere. One, that they need any documentation, and two, if they did, what that documentation has to be.
And if I may add a couple of things. So, there also appear to be inconsistencies across city agencies. We have had a couple of use where a high school principal, these children were enrolled in school, they were connected with community-based organizations, and the principal believed that they were the ages that they said they would, and even informed me that if she thought that they were older, that she would have discussed with them the possibility of pursuing a GED program. But because she believed that they were the age they said they were, she enrolled them in their appropriate grade level, and she found it quite appalling, the hoops that had to be jumped through to get ACS to take these kids into care. And I believe that there have been staff at the HERCs as well, who have identified that these are kids, not adults, and they're the ones connecting the youth to community-based organizations. And that's where we're getting our referrals from, as well as from community-based organizations that these youth are connected to. And I also want to highlight that ACS, like I said in my testimony, is insisting that reports be made to the state central registry. That's not a legal necessity. I have a youth who still hasn't been identified by ACS. No investigation has been commenced. He's got a long, complicated name, so it's possible that whoever's, you know, the community-based organizations or the advocates who are calling in the reports for him are not spelling his name correctly, or they may not be using the right terminology. They may not be saying, "This is a destitute child." They're not lawyers. They don't know what terminology needs to be used to flag this case for the SCR to process it as a destitute child case. And this, it's significant delays because we can't even get an investigation started. So it's incredibly frustrating and heartbreaking for these kids who have to jump through so many hoops to get taken into ACS care.
Thank you. And I'll definitely make this thing, because I know we are running behind schedule, and we have some members who want to ask questions. But first question, I just wanted to ask Mahouba. Have you received additional funding from the city of support? Because I know since the beginning of the influx, you have been on the front lines, and I know there's been lots of talk about making sure you're getting support, and I'm just trying to see, has there been any update around you getting additional support for the additional work that you have taken on?
I think we're still in a stages of additional conversation, but we just currently receive the contract to be at St. Bridges. But the challenge is really big. It's not just St. Bridges. We need to be at our central office. Our central office is the hub. It's where unaccompanied minors are literally being dropped off all hours of the night. But I also want to add about the language part. The city really heavily relies on the language line, and for these children who are dropped off at all random hours, overnight, you don't have those languages. And staff have sympathy to say, "Listen, there's no translator, and I cannot take this child in unless someone interprets." And we interpret for them so that they can enroll these children. Language access is a big issue, and we do need funding to support our volunteers who are translating.
So you have volunteers who've been like, when the language line is not open, where they're picking up for that? And do you know how many hours roughly that might be? Like in...
Sometimes a 24-hour job.
Okay.
With Mamadou's case, he had to be sent to the hospital to take a bone density test. We had to use a volunteer to go with him to go there, and they were there for approximately, I think, four hours.
Jamie, I just had a really quick question, and I guess please be succinct, just even around like the 2019 agreement, where you were on the front lines for that, and that was something that I know that you fought really hard for as advocate. But could you talk about the significance of that win and how if we would have actually actualized that, it could have helped us in the situation that we're in now?
So, there were a few good things that happened in 2019. You're talking about the Legal Aid settlement? Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I think with CW versus New York City and the settlement that established for all intents and purposes the right to shelter for minors, 16 and 17-year-olds in the DYCD system, the terms of the settlement only lasted for three years, and so it expired. It'll be a year this December. And I think that it would help if it was still in place, but I do want to commend DYCD for voluntarily, right, still doing the process. I think that the issue with the way that it works in the DYCD system is unlike the Callahan law that requires that the DHS system expand to meet the need. The settlement, and now even the voluntary process, just says that they need to prioritize the placement of youth, which then leads, like I said in my testimony, to older youth having to be kicked out to make room. So instead of bringing on new beds, which I know you know well, right, always advocating for more beds, they are right, asking older youth to leave so that the younger youth can come in.
And that's been one of my bigger issues, where I've consistently said that we need more beds, and then it's a cycle of, well, we don't need more beds, but if you're kicking people out, then that's the only way we can make room, and we know that there's not enough beds, because 60 beds, just especially during this time, we know that's not enough. But I'll yield so we can get some more council members.
Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Chairs Aviles and Stevens, and Salaam alaikum. Thank you so much for joining us. I'm Councilmember Shaana Hanif, and I have a few questions. First, I'll start with Mamadou. How can the city improve to make the journey in New York City safer and easier for unaccompanied youth? And from your perspective, have you seen any progress?
know that I'm grateful for this opportunity. So what I have to say is that to do your best and to help us out irrespective of whether we are unaccompanied minors or not, help all the asylum seekers, but help them as well. That's what they need. They need a lot of help because their situation is not good, so they do need a lot of help. So that's what they would like to let you know.
Thank you. And two questions for our advocates. How long does it typically take to verify someone is in fact a minor? And then are all unaccompanied migrant youth accounted for?
I can, for the second question, I can certainly say not all unaccompanied minor youth are accounted for. And we're particularly concerned because of just how long it took for us as advocates to finally get ACS to believe these youth. And we know that there are so many more who have not been brought to our attention, and we're concerned that once they hear the answer no, they're not, maybe they don't have stronger advocates to help them navigate the process, maybe they don't know to reach out to us. But in terms of how long it's taken, the youth that we've assisted so far, I think it took about a month, once we started escalating their cases to ACS's attention. But that doesn't account for previous advocacy efforts and contacts with ACS on behalf of those youth, so it does go beyond that month, but once they're brought to our attention, it was about a month.
So basically, unaccompanied youth need an advocate to help them get through the process?
Unfortunately, and it should not be that way.
And then just final question. Are the youth also receiving any notices for eviction in the shelters that they live in, the 60-day rule?
Yeah, so I think one thing for the young people that are in fact minors that have documentation that make them older, the majority of those situations that we're seeing, the young people's documentation that's not correct has them between 18 and 23-years-old, and so then they do get 60-days in the HERC. I can't say for sure if there are minors that have documentation that make them older than 24, sorry, 23, which would mean that they would be getting 30-day notices, but they do get the 60-day notices. And then those that are in school, right, or other factors, get automatic extensions, and then those that do not get automatic extensions, they need to still apply for extenuating circumstances to get replaced, which we're seeing overwhelmingly, regardless of age, people are being denied the EC extensions, and that doesn't, right, young people fall under that category as well of being denied, which means then they're sent to the streets.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Joseph has joined us. Thank you, Councilmember. I think with that, we'll move to the administration. I want to thank you all for the work you're doing and your testimony and all of the recommendations you put forward to this committee. Thank you.
We will now hear testimony from the administration. We will hear from Susan Haskell, Amy Wilkerson, Masha Gindler, Tom Tortorichi, Stephanie Gandell, Luisa Linares, and Penina Orin. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. If panelists delivering testimony, as well as members of the administration who will answer questions from council members, could all please raise their right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Stevens, Chair Aviles, and members of the Committees on Children and Youth and Immigration. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Tom Tortorichi, and I'm the Executive Director of Legal and Support Initiatives at the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, led by Commissioner Manuel Castro. I'm pleased to be joined by my colleagues from the Department of Youth and Community Development, Administration for Children's Services, and Office of Asylum Seeker Operations. I'll read only an excerpt of this testimony so that we can move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Regarding services for unaccompanied immigrant youth, MOYA oversees a small portion of the city-funded programs that provide free confidential immigration legal services, case management and information to New York City's immigrant youth. These programs include the MOYA Immigration Legal Support Centers, also known as Action NYC, the Haitian Response Initiative, the Rapid Response Legal Collaborative, Dream Act Application Assistance, and the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Network. In Fiscal 24, these MOYA programs provided services such as legal assistance and case management to more than 23,563 immigrant New Yorkers, an estimated 3,000 of which were immigrant youth regardless of their family status. This is a 34% increase over the total number of individuals served by MOYA programs in Fiscal 23, due largely to the city's $5-million investment in the Asylum Seeker Legal Assistance Program, which itself provided immigration legal help to more than 1,000 newly arrived immigrant youth under 18 in Fiscal 24. We also oversee the MOYA Immigration Legal Support Hotline, which immigrant New Yorkers, including unaccompanied youth, can call Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Hotline callers are referred to the service providers best suited to meet their unique needs. Unaccompanied immigrant youth calling the hotline are referred to the iCare network through a secure web form. Over the last two months, hotline operators referred 78 immigrant youth to iCare using the referral form, excuse me, and provided informational flyers to an additional 92 callers who didn't meet direct referral requirements. callers who didn't meet direct referral requirements. In addition to direct legal and support services, MOYA provides immigrant New Yorkers with reliable up-to-date information by way of our immigrant rights workshops. More than 8,900 immigrant New Yorkers of all ages attended those in Fiscal 24. Finally, this year, MOYA redeployed capacity for the Action NYC in Schools program run by Catholic Charities Community Services to prioritize immigration legal screenings and assistance for unaccompanied immigrant youth aged 18 to 20 at runaway and homeless youth sites to ensure they would not age out of eligibility for a form of immigration relief known as special immigrant juvenile status. In the three-month period from June to August 2024, the Action NYC in Schools team worked with RHY case managers to complete more than 170 immigration legal screenings for RHY clients aged 18 to 20. They accepted or referred 84 cases for legal representation and filed six emergency age-out petitions in family court. All of the used screen were provided with an eligibility determination and brief advice in counsel regarding what would be needed to proceed, such as how to identify a trustworthy guardian. The legal team also provided RHY case managers with immigration legal orientations and best practices for pre-screening. These numbers are preliminary as we await final Fiscal 25 Q1 data from that program. In addition to programs, MOYA serves as a cross-agency advisor. We provide both sister agencies and community partners with federal policy updates, and we advocate on behalf of federal policies that are in favor of unaccompanied immigrant youth. We also serve as an advisor in several interagency initiatives and working groups addressing services for immigrant youth and relevant topics such as domestic and gender-based violence, human trafficking, and exploitation. NGBV is a primary lead in many of these working groups, as that's their primary area of responsibility. In conclusion, thousands of hard-working city leaders and staff, nonprofit professionals, advocates, and volunteers across a vast interdisciplinary network of agencies and community-based organizations have made extraordinary efforts to support the safety, well-being, and thriving of unaccompanied immigrant youth arriving to and residing in our city. This work is personal for many contributing to these human service efforts, especially if they had to overcome challenges in their own youth or arrive to New York City as immigrant youth themselves. Each young person that has been supported by these efforts, whose challenges may have been eased and whose quality of life may have been supported, motivates us to continue and develop this work further. Today's investments in support for unaccompanied immigrant youth will lead to a stronger New York, made possible by the contributions that these youth have and will continue to make here in our city and country. We have great respect for their bravery in the face of adversity and gratitude for their positive contributions. While much has been done already, many challenges remain, and there is still more work to be done. Thank you for your attention to this important topic. We look forward to your questions.
Great. We'd like to recognize Councilmember Krishna joined us. Please.
Good afternoon. I'm Stephanie Gandell. I'm the Deputy Commissioner for External Affairs at the Administration for Children's Services. In this role, I oversee a number of offices, including Intergovernmental Affairs, and also the Office of Immigrant Services and Language Affairs, or ISLA as we refer to it. In addition to my colleagues from other agencies, I'm joined today by Penina Orin, who's the Manhattan Borough Chief of the Division of Family Court Legal Services, which manages all of our destitute minor filings in family court, as well as my colleague, the Deputy Commissioner for Prevention Services, Luisa Linares, who did not fit at the table but is behind me. I'm going to summarize my testimony, but you have the full testimony. Many children and youth who immigrate to the United States come here with their families. The overwhelming majority of children and youth who come to the United States without their parents are identified at the southern border by U.S. Customs and Border Control and detained as unaccompanied alien children, or as we've been referring to them, unaccompanied minors. The Federal U.S. Health and Human Services Office of Refugee Resettlement, ORR, is typically responsible for the care and custody of unaccompanied minors and has contracts for their own foster homes and group care facilities. While, sorry, notably, this system is entirely separate from ACS, and ACS has no legal role or authority with regard to the care or custody of these children with ORR. ACS is family supports. We provide, manage, and fund a number of family supports, including prevention services, homemaking services, and childcare services. Prevention services are free, typically voluntary, and available throughout the five boroughs regardless of immigration status. Since 2022, some of our contracted prevention providers have been offering their services onsite at both the DHS shelters and at the HERCs to support newly arrived families. We also have ACS staff onsite at the Roosevelt Hotel, connecting families to community-based resources, including prevention services when appropriate. As you know, ACS developed a Managed Promised NYC, a childcare assistance program specifically for low-income families with children, including undocumented children whose immigration status makes them ineligible for other federally funded childcare assistance. The ISLA office within ACS provides support and guidance on immigration and language access issues for ACS staff and contracted providers. Since the start of the increase in newly arrived New Yorkers, we have seen an increased demand for ISLA's assistance and support. In 2024 to date, ISLA has conducted 78 trainings for ACS and provider agency staff. These training sessions focus on understanding the trauma faced by newly arrived immigrant families, how to help connect them to immigration services, and how to access language access services. We've also expanded our language access services, both in spending and in scope, including most recently to our detention centers. Over the past two years, we have seen an increase in the number of youth coming into foster care as destitute minors. New York State Family Court Act, Section 1092, defines destitute minors, and that definition's in the testimony, but I won't read it to you. There are currently about 6,500 children and youth in foster care. As of August 31st, 2024, there were 239 children and youth in foster care on destitute minor petitions. For the full year of 2023, 89 children and youth came into foster care, up from 58 in 2022. All youth in foster care receive the full panoply of foster care services regardless of their immigration status. This includes a foster care placement with a family when possible, medical care, mental health services, educational assistance, Fair Futures, Coaches, et cetera. In addition, long before the recent increase in asylum seekers, ACS has worked closely with foster care agencies to address the immigration needs of children and youth in foster care. Each foster care agency has at least one immigration liaison who works with the ISLA team to ensure that any child or youth in ACS care who is not a United States citizen is referred for immigration legal services. The ISLA team is currently tracking about 450 children as immigrant youth in care. These children have come to the United States from 57 countries, with the largest number being from Central America and the West Indies, South America, and Africa. Many of these children and youth in care will be eligible for special immigrant juvenile status, SIGES, and some are eligible for immigration relief through other means, such as asylum, T visas, U visas, which are available for victims of trafficking or certain crimes here in the United States. As you might know, it takes many years to get a green card through SIGES. Currently, the federal government is processing green cards for those whose approved SIGES application was filed before January 2021. However, during the waiting time, the youth may be eligible to work for, to apply for a work permit and have their deportation proceedings dismissed due to the Biden administration's deferred action policy. ACS is committed to helping New York City's families thrive, and we agree to do all that we can to help families and youth who have come to New York City for a better life. Happy to take your questions.
Good afternoon, Chair Stevens, Chair Aviles, and members of the Children and Youth Immigration Committees. I'm Susan Haskell, Deputy Commissioner for Youth Services at D Y C D, and I'm joined today by Dr. Amy Wilkerson, Assistant Commissioner for Runaway and Homeless Youth Services. On behalf of Commissioner Howard, thank you for this opportunity to update the council about how we address the needs of new arrivals within D Y C D's runaway and homeless youth. We're grateful to have worked with the council over the years, as well as providers and advocates, to build a comprehensive continuum, an ecosystem of RHY services. D Y C D runaway and homeless youth programs are designed to serve youth holistically, enabling them to obtain the services needed to help them thrive. We're committed to helping young New Yorkers build new skills and flourish. D Y C D funds a portfolio of RHY services that are delivered by community-based providers through contracts. The three types of services include residential programs, drop-in centers, and street outreach. Combined, they reach more than 40,000 young people annually. Services are available to young people regardless of their immigration status. Our residential programs include crisis services and transitional independent living support programs. The New York State Office of Children and Family Services regulates all residential services provided by youth bureaus across New York State. I'm proud, over the past several years, that D Y C D tripled the number of beds in residential programs for young people ages 16 to 20, for a total of 753 beds. We implemented two key program policy changes to reflect New York State law, increasing the time young people may stay in residential programs, up to 120 days in crisis services programs, and up to 24 months in TIL programs. Following these state and city legislative changes, we also created residential services for youth up to age 24. We now have four programs with a total of 60 beds for homeless young adults ages 21 to 24. Crisis services programs provide emergency shelter and crisis intervention services. Youth have their basic needs met and work with staff to develop a service plan with short and long-term goals. In cases where family reunification is not possible, provider staff work with youth to identify appropriate transitional and long-term housing opportunities. TIL programs are a longer-term housing option that provides support as youth establish an independent life through education and career development, health services and mental health care, counseling, and basic life skills training. Our drop-in centers in each borough serve youth ages 14 to 24, and at our eight D Y C D drop-in centers, youth are provided basic needs such as food, clothing, supportive services, recreation, health and educational workshops, counseling, and referrals to other services, including shelter as needed. At least one center in every borough is open 24 hours a day, every day of the week. Street outreach focuses on locations in the city where young people tend to congregate, offering on-the-spot information and referrals. The goal is to develop a rapport with youth and connect them to services, including shelter. Counselors and RHY programs work with youth to develop individualized service plans to outline short and long-term goals. They can get a range of supported services, both directly and through referrals, for example, health and mental health services, counseling, education and career support, substance abuse prevention, violence intervention and prevention counseling, and housing assistance, when appropriate, staff members help young people in reuniting with the family or moving to longer-term programs. D Y C D RHY programs, like other city programs, experienced increased demand for services as the number of new arrivals to the city increased. RHY services remain available to young people regardless of immigration status. In response to increasing numbers of young people who need language assistance, we expanded access to telephonic interpretation services. Our most popular languages include French, Spanish, Wolof, Fulani, and Pular. D Y C D coordinates with our partner agencies and participate in the multi-agency youth asylum seeker coordination meetings. D Y C D funders of, D Y C D providers of runaway and homeless youth services, including all residential programs and drop-in centers, give information about services related to immigration, including immigration-related legal services. Providers share written information with youth upon intake to ensure that all those who may need the information will have it. We partner with MOYA to incorporate information about legal and other immigration services into mandated trainings for RHY provider staff. Thank you once again for the opportunity to discuss how we're addressing the needs of runaway and homeless youth. We look forward to continuing to collaborate with the council, advocates, providers, and young people with lived experience to improve services for youth. We're pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to hear very quickly, maybe from all the agencies, we can go from one to the other, around how they identify and track the number of unaccompanied minors going through each of their systems.
Thank you, Chair Aviles. MOYA does not identify and track unaccompanied immigrant youth through its programs.
So unaccompanied minors wouldn't technically be in ACS's care, but young people who do not have immigration status, who are in foster care, while we don't track them in the way I think you mean track them, we are working with them on their, on their legal status, and our Office of Immigrant Services tracks them and their case. And so we know how many young people in care we're working with to help with their legal status, and we know how many young people in care are destitute. But you could be in care as destitute and not have an immigration issue. It could be that you're born in New York City and both of your parents are deceased, so you'd be destitute. Similarly, for young people who we are working with on their immigration status, they might not be an asylum seeker, but they could be in New York another way and not have immigration status. But, you know, it's very important to make sure we're not putting any young people or their families at risk by asking them and tracking their immigration status.
D Y C D does not track migrant youth in RHY programs. We keep in close communication with our providers to understand the needs of the RHY population as it changes and to ensure that those youth are connected to the specialized resources that they need.
So I guess we're, maybe we'll start here really quickly, based on that question, and in reflection of the testimony that we had, we just heard from the young person, Mamadou. Can each of you tell me how your agencies failed in this scenario?
I just want to start by saying that individualized case information is confidential, and so we can't in a public hearing speak to any young person's individual experience. So I'm happy to answer questions more generally.
I'm asking, we heard a number of failures. How should, how should ACS be preventing these failures that we heard? And we heard that this is not an isolated instance, that we were seeing a good number of these cases. So just in your quick reflection, what would ACS, why should ACS be doing to prevent these failures?
Sure. I'm gonna, I just want to make entirely clear, I'm gonna take a step back and not talk to this individual's young, individual circumstance. In general, most of the young people who interact with ACS, there is no issue around their age. We know they're young people, or we know they're not. It's only the circumstances described earlier, really only in the limited number of circumstances where there are questions about a young person's age, which is a new experience for ACS and not something we previously dealt with. In the past, it was extremely clear that if a case was referred to us by the state, it was about a young person. We have, since the summer, put in place a protocol for our staff to follow so that they can use the totality of the circumstances to determine whether or not the individual being referred to us is in fact a child. The destitute minor statute does require that the person be under 18, so to be able to seek legal authority, you know, ACS can't just bring people into foster care, we have to have legal authority to do that. So we do need to be able to plead in court that this is someone under 18, or 18 and under 18. And we need to be sure that we're not adding adults to the foster care system. So we have now, I think the protocol is helping us to have a better sense of how to address this issue better.
Does D Y C D have a response to that?
D Y C D works very hard to spread information about our drop-in centers and all of the resources that we have available to youth, and, you know, to get youth placed in the appropriate programs that they're eligible for as quickly as possible.
Do you think that the example offered, are you saying there was a lack of D Y C D information in any of those shelter facilities, and we should be doing that?
I'm not sure about Mamadou's exact case. His name is a common name, and we've had quite a few young people by that name. But in instances where there is a bed available within D Y C D system, we would make sure that that young person would be attached to that bed, whether that call is coming from an advocate or from... from an advocate or from a community partner, an individual, a school, it doesn't matter. We try to connect those individuals as expeditiously as possible.
How about Moya?
Given that Moya does not track the number of unaccompanied immigrant minors in New York City, I can't say how our office has failed. I can say that historically, the majority of unaccompanied minors are designated as such by the federal government at the border, historically, and then in ORR custody, and then reunited with a sponsor or placed into a least restrictive setting until a sponsor is found. Typically, when reunited with a sponsor, those youth and their sponsor will seek services from the city. Youth who age out of ORR custody when they turn eighteen often seek services from the city, and youth who are under eighteen and were not designated as unaccompanied minors also seek services from the city. And so I think, taking a more specific look at these sub-populations, that, as my colleague from ACS mentioned, this is a new phenomenon, and working, as we have been across-agency and with community partners, to best address the needs is all of our responsibility.
All right. I think we're going to probably dive into many of the failures that this story elucidated and also that were reflected in much of the testimony of many of the advocates before, but we'll move on to zoom out just a quick second. This question is for Moya, we could start. In June, the Biden administration issued a presidential proclamation to temporarily suspend the entry of non-citizens across the southern border during periods of high encounter. Unaccompanied children, however, were exempted from that proclamation. Advocates therefore expected the numbers of unaccompanied children crossing the border to increase as parents were faced with an impossible choice to send their children to the U.S. alone in search of safety. How has Moya, if at all, tracked these developments and sought to account for a potential of unanticipated increases in unaccompanied youth who may be traveling to New York City?
Thank you for your question. Moya's policy team has a federal senior policy advisor who closely tracks legislative and administrative developments in the federal government across various agencies responsible for the identification and care of unaccompanied minors, as well as predicting future trends and increase in numbers in that population and others. We work closely with national partners also, thought leaders in the field, many of whom work with and are part of iCare, in order to best understand the emerging and evolving needs of the population, and we provide cross-agency updates on federal policy developments. We wouldn't do so in the event or in the circumstance of a prediction. However, we do have internal conversations and work with our agency partners to ensure that resources are allocated where they need to be allocated to the extent possible to serve a population. One example of that is the pivot of the Action NYC in Schools program to conduct immigration legal screenings in RHY shelters for those youth aged eighteen to twenty, so that they don't age out of special immigrant juvenile status.
I think I'm a little confused by your answer. I think you mentioned you wouldn't necessarily respond to projected increases, but you're responding to actualities on the ground. Is that what you just said?
No, we would track predictive increases, but we wouldn't necessarily provide a policy update to.
Or funding, or programs, or anything?
No, we would use that information to request or identify the need for additional resources.
So, in this circumstance, given the track and the expectations, and we saw that materially actually happen, where we had huge numbers of unaccompanied youth, was Moya's response to pivot the Action NYC? Were there other places where Moya sought to address this issue?
The pivot of Action NYC in Schools to provide immigration legal services in the RHY shelters and drop-in sites was a concrete action that we can point to, using existing resources to serve the needs of the population. Can't speak to internal conversations related to resource allocation. Can say that we engage with external partners, including and especially iCare and its membership, to understand the trends, the needs, and take them back internally for our internal discussions about resources.
So, has Moya been engaging with the Office of Refugee Resettlement as well?
To my knowledge, Moya has not. Moya did receive a request from U.S. Health and Human Services to add a VOR card, which is a form of identification provided to unaccompanied minors, to the list of qualifying documents for ID NYC enrollment, and Moya did process that request, and it currently sits with ID NYC.
But there hasn't been, Moya hasn't engaged in any advocacy or conversations with ORR about the increases of unaccompanied minors in the city and potential needs?
I can get back to you with respect to specific meetings or conversations. I don't have, I'm not aware of any initially. I do know that there are general engagement sessions with various offices and agencies in the federal government. However, I'm not currently aware of any specific conversations with ORR, but we will get back to you.
Great, thank you. In terms of, in 2014, Moya had convened a task force on this issue of the rising number of unaccompanied minors in the U.S. and New York City. Obviously, an issue very relevant today, in fact, much larger than 2014. Is Moya still coordinating this inter-agency task force?
That specific task force does continue. So, there are a number of task forces within the city that, in which issues related to unaccompanied minors are discussed, best practices shared, resources shared, and strategies discussed. The Human Trafficking Youth Prevention Working Group is one. There are multiple working groups across agencies that deal with issues that touch the population. Citywide Response to Human Trafficking convenings, FGMC advisory committees, the Migrant Public Safety Steering Committee, and the Domestic Violence and Child Welfare Working Group, and I believe that that Child Welfare Working Group is where these issues are most directly discussed.
But the specific inter-agency task force on unaccompanied minors is still meeting? No?
I'll have to get back to you on that, I don't have that specific information.
Okay. Is there a reason why this doesn't have its own function and focus when the numbers are double what they were in 2014?
My understanding is that in 2014, the agency, Moya, together with its sister agencies, created that task force specifically to ensure that immigrant youth identified at New York Immigration Court, specifically because that was a venue in which they could be identified, would be connected with healthcare insurance and other resources. My understanding generally, and I cannot speak to specifics here, but is that the resources that are available to unaccompanied minors and all immigrant New Yorkers are broadly available, and that the specific identification of unaccompanied minors or immigrant youth in Immigration Court is not happening, in part because the resources are so widely available, or at least information about the resources is available.
I hear optimism that maybe we don't need it, but what we're seeing is clearly we do need it. And clearly, there's been a real focus in growth in services to the credit of many of your agencies and many New Yorkers, right, addressing the issue, but it is clear the numbers have doubled, it is clear the funding has not, and we have a serious situation that we need to pay some focused attention to. In 2014, in 2015, Moya also had announced an initiative, I think this is what you were referring to, to have a city staffer in Federal Immigration Court to engage and screen at very first appearance in the juvenile docket. Is this initiative still in place?
Moya does not have a city staffer at New York Immigration Court screening youth for benefits eligibility and providing information and resources. However, again, I do believe that since that time, the field generally of service providers, together with city agencies and partners, have increased the visibility and availability of resources and information.
Do you know of anyone that is actually in Immigration Court in the juvenile docket doing this?
The Office of Civil Justice oversees the iCare program, as well as the Immigrant Opportunities Initiative program, which are the programs through which the majority of this work would be carried out, as well as the Unaccompanied Miners and Families program. I don't have specific information about their activities in Immigration Court. However, those programs do handle more complex immigration legal cases, which immigration matters related to immigrant youth would normally fall under.
Given the numbers alone, would you think it would be an urgent matter to check in with Immigration Court to see if the services are being offered at this point?
I absolutely do think that it's important to ensure that all immigrant New Yorkers, and especially unaccompanied immigrant youth, have access to information about available resources and services in their language and in a format that they can connect with.
In January of 2015, Moya had published an online document listing and describing city resources for immigrant children and youth, and several agencies, mayoral offices also contributed to the information in this document. Does the administration have a plan to update it?
No current plan. The Office of Immigrant Affairs has developed a resource that is intended for all immigrant New Yorkers and published it in multiple languages beyond the top ten and distributed it through shelters and various other places where it could be encountered by immigrant youth. And I think it's important to note that although the resources are general and not specific to immigrant youth or unaccompanied immigrant minors, they are entry points and touchpoints where they may have a conversation with someone such as a Moya Immigration Legal Support hotline operator who listens to them to understand what services they need and direct them in a closer way. And so, the fact that they are not specifically geared toward unaccompanied immigrant minors, in my perspective, doesn't necessarily do them harm because they're guided to a place where they could have a conversation with someone, a case manager at a local CBO that's part of the Moya Immigration Navigation Network or the hotline, that can help them through it.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I keep reflecting on the experience of Mamadou, who had no access to any information and no access to any information in language-accessible ways. It's mystifying to me that we have some generalized information on a website, and we are still hearing young people not getting any access to any of it, despite claims of this intensive case management.
Case management occurs in the shelter sites, and it's a bit different from the case management that I was referring to, which often takes place at community-based organizations and nonprofits that provide sort of social services navigation and connect youth to resources, including school enrollment and other things. I will say that Moya's engagement with the community goes beyond distributing flyers. We've held multiple calls with community-based organizations, community partners, advocates, to hear from them and to provide resources to the extent possible, and those conversations will continue to happen.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the work you do with community-based organizations, and we've seen here today that, you know, they are doing incredible work with very little resources. I'm actually more concerned about how the inter-agency coordination is happening and training and making sure that we have seamless policies across, and we don't have a situation like that was described earlier happening over and over again. So, I guess how Moya is able to expand its resources across city agencies to make sure we are doing much better is a primary concern. So, at an Immigration Hospitals' April 2024 hearing, Moya had shared that they were pivoting, as you mentioned earlier, to Action NYC in Schools to screen the eighteen to twenty-year-olds in RHY shelters, and were planning to surge resources to the youth identified in the screening over the summer to connect individuals turning twenty-one with direct assistance and triage the remainder. At the time of the hearing in April, there were around four hundred youth in shelters, and eighty percent were from African countries. What were the updated numbers, and I think you mentioned this in your testimony earlier, and the statistics from the screening process?
Thanks for the question, Chair. So, the sprint took place, we called it a sprint because it was in a limited duration of time. It was also a pilot in some ways because Moya had not worked directly with DYCD, RHY shelters in the past and in this way. Over the course of June through August of this summer, one hundred and seventy youth were screened for immigration legal relief eligibility, including SIG. Eighty-four were referred for legal representation. Sometimes that was referred, they were referred to legal representation under other contracts, such as the IOI contracts after the initial screening. And there were six emergency age-out petitions filed in family court. These numbers are preliminary as we await the finalization and validation of fiscal twenty-five Q1 numbers, which would more directly capture these. But generally, case managers across the RHY system, both in drop-in sites and sites with beds, expressed that the provision of services to that specific population was welcomed and needed, and that, you know, while it is a learning experience for all of us with any pilot, they would be interested in additional trainings and resources for the population.
So, for the hundred and seventy that you screened, how many individuals received direct assistance?
One hundred and seventy were screened, and eighty-four were referred for legal representation, with six emergency age-out petitions filed in family court for youth that were within months or weeks of their twenty-first birthday and at risk of aging out of SIG. The team continues to work through the list of youth who were screened or scheduled to be screened and serve that population, including those that were identified for legal assistance.
I'm sorry, so the remaining almost a hundred young people, what happened to them?
Could you please repeat?
So, eighty-four got legal representation and six, you did age-out petitions, what happened to the remaining young people?
I'll have to check back at the numbers, but I believe that youth that did not receive legal representation, it was either because their case wasn't ready to proceed. For instance, they may not have had a trustworthy adult identified as a guardian, which would be needed to proceed in a SIG case. They may have been determined to be ineligible for immigration relief of some sort. They may have already had an attorney or have already filed the necessary petitions or applications. And so I don't have a specific breakdown of the reasons why more youth were not referred for legal representation, however, those are some of the common reasons.
Great. We'd like to know where they were triaged to, if you were unable to assist them. In terms of, with the phasing out of Action NYC by the end of this year and the replacement programming not intended to have a physical presence in schools, are there any plans by the administration to engage with school-aged students eligible for special immigrant juvenile status? status or other immigration statuses and connect them to legal service providers?
Thank you. Moya continues to engage with our partners at DOE, in particular the team that worked on and works to implement the Project Open Arms Plan to ensure at minimum that information about immigration legal services available through the city and other sources is made available to youth. For the purposes of Action NYC in schools and, as you noted, its wind down, the new, we can't talk much about the new procurement in the Moya Immigration Legal Support Centers, but I can say that it's intended to ensure that legal service providers are partnering with school locations in their neighborhood to ensure a closer connection and also a more widespread and distributed set of connections between local institutions such as schools and immigration legal service providers that are community-based. In the, in this procurement, up to 25 awards will be made for immigration legal service contracts. And virtually all of those contractors could partner, and we would encourage them to partner with their local schools to provide Know Your Rights sessions and connections to immigration legal screenings and assistance.
So in terms of the DOE collaboration, what does that look like exactly?
With Action NYC in schools, there's a close multi-year partnership that has existed in which that team holds Know Your Rights sessions and legal clinics at schools with high immigrant youth populations throughout the city. With respect to Moya and its communication, there are standing meetings in which both Moya and New York City Public Schools or DOE are present, some of these inter-agency groups. However, I am not a participant in a standing call with DOE. Our engagement is typically on a case-by-case basis and the Moya policy team also engages closely.
And so are there concerns with how the phasing out of Action NYC could disrupt the legal supports for minors, including those in immigration court currently?
Concerns have been expressed and addressed through formal responses by Moya and the city in the form of question-and-answer documents published as addenda to the RFPs, as well as responses, public responses to the protest letters that were issued. And so some of the responses are there. With respect to ongoing matters, immigration legal service contractors are responsible for seeing the case through to completion. And Moya has engaged with current contractors to request a breakdown of the number of cases that they anticipate may be open beyond December 31st, which is when the current contracts will close. There will not likely be a large number of removal defense or SIG cases to be wound down under Action NYC because Action NYC providers mostly deal with straightforward cases. The large number of removal defense and SIG cases are handled by IOI and the ICARE programs.
It's interesting that you say that because providers are definitely saying the opposite, that it is not just simply straightforward cases, that they have a good number of substantive cases. And in fact, something like SIG is a several-part process. And we are in a place where this program is winding down with no transitionary period to hire up and figure out anything else. So I'm not sure how you're reconciling these issues.
We'll continue to work with our existing contractors to identify means to ensure that they can continue to provide assistance and representation in existing cases rather than withdraw representation from those cases.
And how will you ensure that? If you're changing the model, how do you ensure that there is going to be continuity there? Are you adding additional funding to make sure those cases are going to be held?
No additional funding will be added. If a current contractor is awarded a contract under the new procurement, we may work out some system to provide credit of some sort for cases that remain open. Those discussions are internal and we do not have a policy to apply at this time. It also should be said that a number of the immigration legal service providers contracted with the city are contracted to provide services under multiple contracts and contract types. So internal conversations and conversations with those multi-contract holders could also provide another potential solution.
So in terms of what specific programming does Moya have for unaccompanied minors?
Moya does not have a specific program dedicated to that population.
I think we'll be wrapping up and don't worry, I haven't forgotten about the rest of the panel. Can you tell us how Moya performs outreach around this population to ensure that they're connected to appropriate resources?
Absolutely.
And what does coordination look like with DYCD and ACS in this regard?
Moya provides outreach in a few different ways. Some of them are through our community partners as contractors in the Asylum Seeker Navigation Centers Program. Some of our outreach is conducted by Moya External Affairs staff. In fact, in the past year, I have some data here related to external affairs activities that I can provide. Just one moment, please. From January to present of this year, the Moya External Affairs team held 27 events dedicated specifically to the 18 to 24 population. And from May of this year to present, provided more than 1,000 youth aged 18 to 24 with IDNYC enrollment help. That group also provides one-pagers, the one-pagers I referenced earlier, with general services information and other information at those events and tabling events. A form of outreach, and it's outreach because we distribute information about the Moya Immigration Legal Support hotline, is that mechanism, so providing the hotline number, youth call. As mentioned previously, the hotline answered 57,000 calls in calendar in fiscal '24. We estimate that approximately 10% of those were immigrant youth under the age of 24, and that also is an important lifeline. Additionally, Moya partners with multiple agencies as well as a group called Algun Dia, which is not funded by the city but works closely with Moya and the city, including Owasso and other partners, to address issues related to child candy selling and provide resources and support to those families and also understand, better understand the trends that are occurring.
So how are you working with Algun Dia?
There is a working group that partners with them closely. So the city provides information about resources that they can distribute and also hears from them about the needs and trends of that particular population.
So a working group at Moya that's providing flyers to Algun Dia?
I believe that the working group is populated mostly by members of the Deputy Mayor for Health and Human Services and Williams Isams team. Moya participates as well and it's an information exchange as well as an opportunity to provide training on how to distribute and talk about city resources and services.
Are they offering funding to this group?
To my knowledge, there is no funding involved.
In terms of, the RHY providers have reported that there have been long wait lists for immigration assistance at their sites. How is Moya coordinating pro bono immigration attorneys and legal services to support the RHY providers?
The only coordination that Moya has engaged in with respect to immigration legal services at the RHY sites has been the sprint over the summer. Moya, aside from that, Moya is required by Local Law 4 to provide an annual presentation to RHY case managers and leadership with respect to the availability of immigration legal services citywide. And we do that on a regular basis, well, annually. And I think more than 6,400 youth received information that was provided over the past approximately calendar year.
So the sprint, the sprint is over? Are you not doing that work anymore? It was just that surge during the summer?
It was through August 31st.
Does Moya have plans to continue to do this work given the numbers haven't decreased?
As you know, Moya's immigration legal service programs are in a transitional period with the issuance of the new procurement. And so after that process is concluded, we will look to the providers and what they may be able to provide and the places where resources and support are needed and make those connections as best we can.
That's concerning. How is Moya coordinating with minors that aren't going through or are at the border? Does Moya have a mechanism to ensure those minors are still receiving specialized services for their age group?
Other than ensuring that the Action NYC hotline and all of our community and legal service partners screen and refer immigrant youth to ICARE for immigration legal services, as well as the broad distribution of information about those service entry points that I referenced earlier, we do not have mechanisms, but those are the two main ones.
So in terms of, I'd like to shift over to Owasso very quickly. Is it true that Owasso is now handling special immigrant juvenile status cases?
I can answer that. Hi, everyone. My name is Mascha Kindler. I haven't had a chance to introduce myself. I'm the Executive Director of the Asylum Application Help Center and historically we focus on asylum, TPS, and work authorization. However, we were interested in doing a pilot to see if we could do SIG cases pro se. And we have concluded that pilot, we consider it to have been successful. We focus on doing SIG for 20-year-olds that can't be referred to providers and are at risk of aging out of the support.
I'm sorry, did you say that it was successful? Can you tell us more about the numbers and what made it successful?
So we wanted to make sure that this is done right. So we've now filed 39 SIG cases and of those, all but two were successful in getting the family court orders that we're able to send over to USCIS. And of those cases, two have received SIG status and the rest we're still waiting on. But we were concerned about, you know, we went to see if we were able to get the family court orders needed to send to USCIS and we found that in 95% of our cases so far, we were able to.
So it sounds like in these cases, they were 20-year-olds, which is better than what we are hearing. But with only two granted, how are you planning to remain with those cases to make sure that they are indeed successful?
It's a good question. So for those two that are granted, when I say successful, I mean that they got SIG status, deferred action, and we're able to bring them back and apply them for work authorization. But it's true that ultimately what's best for those clients is to eventually get connected to full representation. But I think just as we do with asylum, our role in the ecosystem is try to prevent people from aging out and give as many people supports as we can, knowing that we're adding to the kind of ecosystem, not substituting it. We ultimately are a pro se model and we wanted to be able to do this to be as helpful as possible to the scenario that we're seeing.
I mean, as you heard in the testimony earlier, pro se model is not an appropriate model for SIG cases. Why do you believe that it's an appropriate model?
I think it depends. I think pro se model for 20-year-olds is appropriate because what we're looking at is these folks might have not been served at all if we weren't able to do these emergency SIGs because for a lot of the really amazing legal service providers that are doing this work and to whom we refer cases to as well, when we see them under 20, they have limitations about the folks being unaccompanied minors and having at least 18 months from 21 and many cases being ordered removed. So there's some understandable gaps in the system that we hope to be helpful with.
What does that mean, "hope to be helpful"? So we have a return, we need legal representation. What does that mean? What is Owasso going to do for those cases?
I would say "hope to be helpful" in like scenario A, and it's a scenario where we don't provide the support, those individuals probably would not get any legal support at all and would just age out of being eligible for SIG and miss that opportunity. What we're able to do, while it's not full legal representation, is preserve them to make sure that they're able to file and be eligible for SIG in time before they hit 21. We're helping kids that are often, I mean, I shouldn't say kids, kids loosely, but we're helping young adults that are weeks away from turning 21. And so we want to be able to preserve that, submit their documents to UCIS, most likely once we get the family court documents, get them the SIG status. And then they have time now to be able to get additional supports to get that green card down the line. As we heard, there's long lines for that process.
So in terms of these, in terms of this group of cases, your pilot cases, were all of them screened to make sure that they were a year before their 21st birthday?
Yes, exactly.
Are you screening and putting anyone through the system that is right, ready to turn 21, like a couple months before their 21st birthday?
At the moment, in the pilot phase, we're focusing on folks that are like four weeks out of turning 21.
Why would you do that?
When we were doing the pilot program, we had to prioritize the cases that were going to age out for us to figure out how to do it, to make sure we can do it, to make sure that we figure out all the kinks in the pro se model. And so it made most sense to focus on those that are about to age out. And also those individuals are not cases we could refer to legal service providers.
So you know those are cases you're not going to be able to get legal service provision for, but you open them up and push them through anyway, knowing potentially you may not even get a response for the petition within that time? It just seems utterly irresponsible to do that.
I want to know a little bit more about what you mean because from our perspective, these are individuals that essentially in a couple weeks will never be eligible for SIG, but due to us walking them through the process and helping them fill out the pro se motions, they are able to, in 95% of our cases so far in the pilot phase, able to get the family court documents they need to submit with UCIS. And then we're able to apply them for work authorization and we would be able to put in a motion to stop removal proceedings as well if needed. So it seems, I think that the complications around pro se model for SIG are real and interesting and things we need to continue discussing and I respect the positions of folks about where the line of pro se for younger adults is. But at the end of the day, these are people that would be forever left out of the option to be getting SIG, deferred action, and potentially a green card unless we stepped in in these, you know, cases so far.
There's a lot to disagree with you. It seems like Owasso has a knack for like just starting stuff and walking away. And the implications around that are quite severe. And it seems like a little bit of malpractice. And it seems like a little bit of malpractice to open up something when you know you won't be able to help. They will not be able to access legal services and put them in direct jeopardy for not being able to actually get any relief at all. It seems utterly irresponsible.
I would say we, we conducted this work in partnership with a lot of practitioners in the areas and CBOs. And we felt like the, the way that we're going about it does not, will not result in any negative impact on the individual and would result in either a positive or-
You did thirty-nine applications, you only have two approved. How are you claiming, unless, unless the standard is here is filling out paperwork? If this, if that's our outcome measure of success, is filling out the paperwork, then we're, we're amazing. But that is not the outcome of success, correct?
Of course not.
So I, I, I think while you're obviously making a good effort and this is not to say that you have different interests, that is not a measure of success here. And to claim to use a model that we know does not work for this population, to use a metric of how many petitions you were able to file is, is not okay. It's, it's, it's a little bit of a shell game. I think we need to be honest here. This is city resources that we have to invest appropriately to protect people and to support them. If we know this is not gonna work in the long term, investing in it because we did a bunch of applications doesn't make any sense to me. So I think, I think with that, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna turn it over to my chair. We have a lot more questions. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. It's been a long hearing, so let me know if anybody needs a break to go to the bathroom or something, so I can understand. But my first set of questions will be for DYCD, so if other members wanna step away, you can do that, you have a couple of minutes. But so the public reporting from April twenty-twenty-three revealed that DYCD runaway and homeless youth service director asks for detailed information for sixteen-to-seven-year-olds on behalf of ACS and ICE. Since twenty-twenty-two, have ACS or DYCD shared information about any youth or child with ICE?
Thank you. DYCD does not and has never shared information, personal information about youth with any immigration enforcement agency?
In April twenty-twenty-three, a spokesman from City Hall stated that city agencies were trying to figure out how many, how to make referrals to the Office of Refugee Settlement, ORR, which serves unaccompanied youth. Has the information been available successfully to refer youth to ORR?
The question is to have we successfully referred individuals to ORR? We do not refer youth directly to ORR. Typically, we would, if, if a youth is in our care and they have been in ORR's custody, we would provide the youth that information for them to make that connection themselves.
So you haven't, so it's a no?
No.
So MRR shows that drop-in centers, crisis service providers, and TILs for both youth and homeless, young adults have increased and providers are nearly or have reached capacity. Furthermore, according to DYCD and Local Seventy-Nine's report, one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven youth were unable to secure a bed between January and June of this year, a sharp increase from the prior six months. As the number of unaccompanied migrant youth continues to increase, what is the measures does DYCD plan to implement to ensure that we are not turning children away due to lack of beds?
At DYCD, we try to make the best use of all of the resources that we have available to us. If a youth is seeking a bed in a DYCD program and one is not available, we would try to make sure that that young person is connected to whatever available resource they're eligible for.
So could you give an example? Because this is one of the things I've been yelling about for the last three years. So welcome to the party. Susan knows this. I've been talking about getting more beds. And so what, what, what does that look like? Because, you know, this report, I know I have conversations with you guys offline about this, but this report obviously is chilling that we're turning any young person away, let alone almost eleven-hundred young people. And so if they're not being referred to bed, what does it look like? What is the process? So what are those other services that they would be receiving?
If, if they're eligible to go into DHS, then they would be connected to DHS. If they're a migrant and they can go to a HERC, we would make that connection as well. If they're sometimes minors that need to be connected with ACS resources. So for each case, we would assess based on their age, their need, their circumstance, what other resources are they eligible for, and we would connect them to those.
I mean, because, you know, it, it gets very cringy when I start to hear we're referring young people to DHS because one of the reasons we have separate systems is because we don't want them to go there because they don't have, they're not getting the supports that they need. And so just, you know, I think I asked this every hearing. So do you guys believe we need more beds at this point? I know I ask this all the time and I never get a straight answer, but at this point from this report, do you? Does DYCD believe that we need more beds for young people? No? Yes? Maybe? No?
I think that we would continue to work to utilize the resource.
With the lack of resources you have? All right, the lack of resources that you got, got it. I'm gonna go on the record for saying, of course we need more beds and we're gonna continue to fight for it because turning away this amount of young people, even if we're referring them to other things, does not make sense because we know that we have this, this carve-out for specific reasons because they need a level of care that other folks aren't able to provide, so. And so like, what's the contingency plan as these numbers continue to rise, right? So when we're thinking about, we, we had this report, we're looking at it. So how are you using this information to now change whatever policies other than saying that we're going to, you know, refer them other places? Are there, are you guys making other plans? Are, you know, are we going to our favorite person in city government, Jock, and asking for more money for additional beds? What are some plans that we're putting in place to, to use this data to kinda help us push forward the conversation?
I mean, I think that's a fair question. We're gonna continue to monitor these trends. This period, this last reporting period is the first time we saw numbers like this. And I do wanna say, it doesn't mean that every young person who shows up in this report didn't ultimately get a bed. We're kinda reporting on people who there wasn't a bed available at the time that they presented. So it may be somebody got a bed a little further down the line and we do our best to remove any duplication, but there, there still could be some duplication here. So, long story short, we're gonna continue to monitor. In the previous period at the end of twenty-twenty-three, it was the first time really ever we saw that we weren't generally able to place especially sixteen-to-twenty-year-olds in bed. So, you know, we, it would be great if these numbers declined, but if they, you know, whatever numbers we do see, to Amy's point, we're going to continue to make sure that they are referred to a service and that nobody is just flat-out turned away without a resource.
Absolutely. And I think this is more about like making sure that you guys have the information so that we can use that information to guide where we need to put resources because I think that for the last two years, we, we knew this was, this was coming and, and somewhat happening already. But now these numbers, we have the information where we're like, we can't deny that this isn't happening anymore. I think we were able to kinda say, okay, well, it's, it's happening. We see the trends, especially with a lot of us, young people and asylum seekers coming into the city. We were kind of ignored in the process, like let's not forget that, even around young people being a part of this conversation. So thank you to the chair for even helping to bring this to light, where a lot of the conversations, we had multiple hearings on the asylum seekers and, you know, you guys have thirty seconds if you have any extra questions, no one asks questions about you. And so I think that it's time for us to make sure that in this process that we are getting our fair share of the resources in this process to ensure that the young people are getting the things that they need. So I'm gonna continue to beat this drum because you can't do the work if you don't have the resources. And so we can refer out as much as we want, but that's not gonna work because we don't have the resources to do the work that we know we do well. How does DYCD track the number of migrant youth in RHY? Because I don't even think you guys track this, correct?
We don't, we don't track the number of-
And do you guys think that this is something that you should look to start tracking, especially with, and not in a sense of tracking, but I think some of this data is kinda needed at this point because we see there's been such a sharp increase in the numbers, especially with young people turning away and thinking about they need specific resources and a different type of resources. So do you think this is something that we can start thinking about or maybe working together to start to develop? Because I know, I hate to put more work on providers because this would be more work on providers, but do we think that this is something we should start to look into so that we can then also equip providers with the adequate resources to serve this specific population?
I mean, DYCD is working closely with our providers. And although we're not tracking specifically that information, our providers are working one-on-one with youth and young adults that come into the system and assessing their needs and communicating back to us what those needs are for us to assist them with getting the supports that they need to carry out their responsibilities appropriately. And I think that we would continue to do that moving forward.
Okay. I mean, and I think speaking to the providers, they kinda do this unintentionally already. But, you know, just for me, it's always thinking about how do we maximize it. And I know we, we should be a data-driven, you know, city, but sometimes we're not. And so I think this is something we should definitely even just be thinking about, even if it's for a short period of time as we are seeing the numbers that are coming in. Because then that helps us, especially on the council side, to be able to say, well, this is what's happening, this is the increase, and not just have anecdotes. And so definitely want to talk and think about further of how this could possibly happen. How are resources being allocated to address the capacity issues in most impacted areas such as Manhattan drop-in centers and shelters?
I think we, first of all, we have a very, like, a good communication between our programs and providers. So we're convening them regularly, there's a lot of conversation. They work together on their own, we work to support their coordination. So if a young person, for example, was like presenting in the Bronx and was looking for a resource that wasn't available, we would, we definitely have a, a mechanism for communicating that beds are available over here, for example, or that a resource is available over there. So I think staying in close coordination, communication about that. I think, I don't really have like specific data about the trends in Manhattan right now, but I do feel that that has like diffused to some degree. Yes, there's still demands in Manhattan, but we're kinda looking comprehensively across the system about what's available.
And just a quick question, even around like the, the drop-in centers. I'm hearing that in the Bronx, the drop-in center, I know that we switched over to the door. So we currently don't have a twenty-four-hour drop-in center in the Bronx. Do you know when that would, that would be switching over?
The door was so gracious to start up a twenty-four-hour drop-in center in the Bronx for us. And they've been working to continuously expand their hours from the time that they took the contract until now. The anticipated completely twenty-four-hour date would be November first.
Okay. Oh, so that's soon?
Yes.
Oh, amazing. Great. That sounds great. Let me write that down because, you know, I have to forget everything. All right, well, I'll, I'll follow up. Thank you. There are only sixty residential available, available for homeless young, younger adults, twenty-one to twenty-four. According to the MRI, the utilization rates of homeless young adult crisis services was ninety-seven percent while TIL programs operated at ninety-nine percent capacity. The full utilization of both crisis and TIL programs indicates a system operating at its limits. Does this agency believe it is appropriate to increase the number of beds to better serve the homeless young adults? Because the utilization rates are going up, so.
I, I would definitely agree with you that utilization rates have been going up from year to year. But we're, we're gonna continue to use the resources that we have available to do the best that we can for the young people that we're serving.
That's a good one. We're gonna use the resources that we got. I got it. I mean, we don't have, I mean, honestly, you don't have a choice but to do that. But, you know, I think that there needs to be some type of plan that we're making because if we're at ninety-seven and ninety-nine, we are literally on the brakes of capacity. And even, I feel like at ninety-seven, ninety-nine, we are at capacity. So if there is no contingency plan on how to move forward, then I feel like we are not prepared. So definitely want us to start working and thinking about what is this plan and how do we work for it, especially as we enter budget season. Like, I think that it's gonna be important that there's some type of strategy or plan, although we know that you're using all the resources that you have now, right? In twenty-twenty-three, DYCD implemented a no-sleep policy at the city drop-in center despite the pleas for RHY providers to allow them, allow use with nowhere to go to stay overnight. Is this policy still in effect?
Yes, drop-in centers are not shelter.
Yeah, we know that. But we know the kids don't be having nowhere to go, and especially at ninety-seven percent. So do we tell them to sleep on a train? What are we doing?
They can definitely utilize the drop-in centers twenty-four hours a day. That is not a problem, just the distinction that a drop-in center is not a shelter and does not accommodate regular sleeping in the same way that a shelter would. But drop-in centers are open, they are available, they're there twenty-four hours. We do not want young people sleeping on trains. We want them to come into our drop-in centers and utilize that resource.
Okay. So they can rest their eyes. So that's what we're saying, right? They can rest their eyes a little bit? We're not gonna kick them out? Resting their eyes is okay? Okay.
Resting is for everyone is always important.
Okay, great. They're resting their eyes. That's what we're saying. Great. Providers have reported that DYCD is considering expanding the length of stay for youth under, under twenty-one until they secure shelter. When will this policy officially go into effect and what matrix will be used to monitor the impact of extended stay? And how will the policy be adjusted if it significantly worsens?
The extending the length of stay up to two, to two years, the length of stay that we already implemented. Could you ask me a question one more time?
Oh, I'm sorry. When will this policy take effect and what matrix will you use to monitor the impact of the extended stay?
This policy took effect in twenty nineteen? It was approximately three or four years ago that the policy took effect. So I think that, you know, it's difficult to pinpoint what is really causing the increase in our length of stay and utilization and things like that. But the increase from the eighteen months to the two years has been in effect for quite some time and could be a factor attributing to some of that.
What, what measures are being considered to manage capacity given the number of youth being turned away may increase due to the extended day, I mean, extended stays?
Give me that question one more time.
So now that, you know, that young people are staying a little, I mean, are granted to stay longer until they secure housing, like, are there any measures being put in place? Because if they're staying longer, then that means someone else can't be there. So how are we like balancing this out?
I think that, you know, we have eight hundred and thirteen beds. So we have to continue to use the resources that are available to us across the continuum of homeless system, programs that are available that meet their needs.
The monitoring period for the right to shelter settlement for sixteen-to-eight-year-olds ended in December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Does DYCD still recognize and guarantee right to shelter for sixteen-to-seven-year-olds in New York? If so, how is this right currently being enforced?
I think that the terminology right to shelter is not like directly applicable in that way. But DYCD does prioritize the placement of sixteen-year and seventeen-year-olds in bed, into RHY beds if they're in need. So if a young person who's under the age of eighteen, who's a minor, does present themselves at a RHY program and they are in need of bed, they would be given first priority. And they would not be turned away. Let me just be clear with that. We would not turn them away. We would not discharge them to homelessness. We would make sure that they either got a DYCD bed or another bed that they were eligible for. Sometimes we make connections with ACS if that's an appropriate resource for them.
Just a couple more questions and then ACS will welcome you to the party. Providers have stated that unaccompanied, unaccompanied migrant youth have largely learned about RHY facilities through word of mouth. How can the HERCs better coordinate with DYCD to ensure that youth are informed of the youth shelter system upon their arrival?
I just wanna state that youth learn about services through word of mouth is like a culture.
Yeah.
You know, through, most of the young people that come into DYCD's RHY programs express that they heard about the program through someone else. This is a, a common thing through a friend and that's why we really encourage peer-to-peer work. But we've developed relationships with the HERCs, the re-ticketing centers, all of the other city entities that are doing the residential work with migrants to be able to share with them our resources so they know what we do, how to access it, and how to make those connections. how to make those connections.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, most of our programs are through word of mouth and, and that's what they usually do, but I think especially with young people coming in from other countries, it's, we have to do a better effort because, you know, it's just a little different. And, and especially in New York, sometimes it gets really hard to, like, navigate through all the bureaucracy. And so especially for the young people, we should definitely try to just make sure we're just coordinating with the H E R C S and making sure that we're trying to capture those young people as soon as possible.
Definitely, we, we're definitely working in that way collaboratively with those entities.
Are individuals eligible to receive services at asylum seeker help center if they are residing in D Y C D shelters?
Yes.
Providers have noted that challenges for using language line to offer sensitive care for youth in some language remain difficult to support through existing resources. Given these limitations, would the agency consider allocating additional financial support to expand in-person interpret, interpretation services for R H Y providers? Say yes, so that I can fight for it.
We, we've definitely.
You would love it, right?
We've definitely.
It would be great.
We, we've definitely extended the, the language line as a resource for our providers. Language line was not available to our providers 24 hours a day previously, so we've put a lot of emphasis in making language line universally available to everyone so that they can communicate with our youth in all of the various languages that we're seeing now, which is, you know, a, a change in the culture of what we've typically seen in R H Y. So we're going to continue that and not opposed to, you know, providers using resources, community-based resources as much as possible. We've actually had some conversations with them about them utilizing interpretation from community-based organizations.
Yeah, so we'll figure out how to get some funding for that, so great, you guys agree.
Is, is that a funded effort? Will that be funded effort, or are you going to ask community-based organizations to depend on volunteers in their community to subsidize the city work?
No, Lex, so we're going to ask for it in the budget this year because we know it's not funded.
Some, some of our providers have expressed having partnerships and also the ability to make those relationships on their own, so we just tried to connect them with those entities that do that work.
Yeah, and I know some of the providers have been using, like, other folks who are there and some of the participants and staff who have, who are in those other languages, but definitely, it's definitely a need. Given the influx of unaccompanied youth in D Y C D providing additional training focused on social, emotional learning support so that they can better serve the population additionally, how has D Y C D incorporated feedback from providers to implement policy changes in response to the growing needs?
Feedback from providers, I mean, definitely the need.
You, you can talk into the mic, Susan, we love you.
I mean, feedback from providers has been essential because as this migrant and new arrivals has increased, we're learning, you know, what's needed, and we're learning that from providers. So the need for legal services was certainly uplifted, the need for language services are certainly uplifted, and I think we have, you know, we've done our best to make sure to tap into available resources, including the resources that have been outlined by my colleagues here today, to target those specifically towards runaway and homeless youth. We really appreciate that, and we, we keep those very active coordination meetings alive so that we can tap into what is needed, what providers are lifting up to us in meetings and onsite visits.
Thank you. Last question for D Y C D. What are the policies that are in place at D Y C D to ensure that the clients are aware of their right to enroll in education, including transfer high schools? And how does D Y C D connect their clients to D O E to coordinate their enrollment?
Well, I'll start by saying that Department of Education has been a great partner and is very active in our regular coordination meetings. Sometimes New York City Public Schools is lifting up needs that D Y C D can be helpful with, and at the same time, D Y C D may be lifting up needs that, that young people can benefit from in terms of, like, enrollment center or specific situations. So I think we just stay connected and we do frankly a fair amount of case management if there are circumstances where something's needed and there seems to be a barrier.
Thank you.
I want to just also add that D O E is regularly presenting to our providers at our provider meetings to explain to them the resources that are available for our young people and how to make those connections. We've also tried to do some partnerships, and one of our drop-ins actually did partner with the D O E to have an onsite enrollment event where young people can come and get directly enrolled in, in academic programs through the D O E at the drop-in center. So we're trying to continue to build out those kinds of relationships.
I just have a quick follow-up to make sure I understood correctly. So as far as we understood, the, our, our R H Y programs lacked access, or referral access to the asylum application help center, but you just said that that is not the case. Can you clarify for the record?
Yeah, that is not the case. We had been in the process of building out us, an approach of how to make that, those referrals, that we spoke with our providers at the most recent provider meeting and provided them that step-by-step for how they can make those direct connections from D Y C D-funded R H Y programs to the asylum seeker help center.
And how many have been made so far?
It's only been one week, so.
Oh.
I don't know if.
Just in time for this hearing.
I don't know if they sent any on Friday or not, but it, it, I don't, it wasn't really connected to the hearing, I don't think, because it was something we have been working on for quite some time, and we just happened to, you know, share the information.
Okay. So I guess we look forward to, to hearing how that direct connection is materializing and also what it looks like for S I G cases as well in particular. And so is there, is there any particular timeframe or milestones that are set up as part of this, addressing this, this gap or making the reconnection?
Well, I, I, I mean, I think that in the sprint process, our providers did a really good job of referring all of the individuals that were currently in our programs that had not been screened for screening, but we still had kind of the gap for the, the over 21-year-olds, which we think that this, this relationship is really going to help support. So we want to just keep a track of who's making the referrals and continue to provide support to our providers so they can make those connections and we can troubleshoot if things go awry, so we can ensure that every young person gets connected to the legal resources that they need.
So, so as of last week, all the providers are aware they can make direct referrals?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Joseph so she can ask some questions. And then pass it back to me.
Thank you, chairs. Good afternoon. Just a couple of questions around, how long does it take an unaccompanied minor to see a judge?
Are you asking A C S that question?
Yeah.
So A C S wouldn't be involved in the legal case of an unaccompanied minor, so we wouldn't know the answer, because they're being processed and in the care and custody of the federal government.
Moya, can you answer that?
Yeah, I was only going to respond that it would depend what type of judge, an immigration judge, a family.
Immigration judge.
It would depend on the specific case. It would depend upon when their first master calendar hearing in immigration court is scheduled via what's called a notice to appear, which is issued by Immigration and Customs.
Because we hear that young people are seeing as young as five years old sitting in front of judges all, unaccompanied by an attorney.
It's a, it's a, it's a longstanding issue. There is no guaranteed right to counsel in federal immigration court, and that prejudices a great many youth that don't have an attorney.
How many of the young people coming in unaccompanied are with disabilities and how are they being serviced?
Again, A C S doesn't have the care and custody of unaccompanied minors, they're in the care and custody of the federal government and O R R, so we wouldn't have that information.
So I guess I don't need to continue with my questions, because you don't have any answers. Does, does the city and the federal government talk at all? Because these kids wind up in your custody, there's a handoff, is there a conversation?
So the overwhelming majority, thousands and thousands of young people who come across the border in the custody of O R R, never interact with A C S. There's just a few ways that they would interact with A C S. One would be if their sponsor family needed prevention services, like any other family, we would provide prevention services. If unfortunately there was abuse or neglect in their sponsor family, we would be notified through the S C R in a way of any abuse or neglect. There are some young people in the care and custody of O R R where their care and custody, they all end at 18, and their immigration attorney and those work, and the agency working with that young person believe that they really need assistance beyond age 18, at which point we can work through our process to bring a young person from O R R care into foster care and provide foster care services to them so that their care and custody doesn't end at 18 with O R R.
What type of support do you provide for the sponsor families?
So we offer, and Louisa is probably the best situated here to talk about it, but we offer a full continuum of prevention services that are available regardless of immigration status to any family in New York City across the five boroughs. That includes, it's very individualized, but includes language access services. A C S provides in-person interpretation, written translation services for our own staff, but also for our prevention staff and our foster care staff. And so they, that's available to all of our providers if needed.
Of the young people, you see if any of them are trafficked, is there any support in place for the ones that are, are they prioritized in getting support?
So we have services and support specifically tailored to help meet the needs of young people who've been trafficked, regardless of whether they were trafficked in this manner that you're describing or trafficked in general. And we have a really strong team of people working to provide assistance, support, counseling, therapy, as well as identification for young people who've been trafficked.
And there's a time period, a transition time period for these young people, what, what support is in place for them?
So, you mean from foster care?
Mm-hmm.
So young people in our care and custody, regardless of immigration status, are eligible for all the same services and supports. And so we would work with a young person who doesn't have a green card, the big difference would be working with them on their immigration status and referring them for S I Gs, but otherwise they'd have the full panoply of services, healthcare, referrals for education, therapy, in this case, if they needed it, inter, language access services, Fair Futures, coaches, et cetera.
Thank you, chairs.
So I have a number of questions. I just wanted to go back to A C S. Stephanie, when you were speaking before, you mentioned an age identification policy that A C S has. Can you share that, share with us what that policy is?
Sure, it's more of a protocol and not a policy. And just to take a step back, most young people who are referred to A C S through any manner are indeed young people. The only reason we have a protocol is to, this new issue that we faced where young people were coming to the United States and presenting to another government agency, and usually the federal government through O R R or people at the border, that they were an adult. It is only then later that they're saying they're a child. So we were presented with conflicting information about whether the young person was indeed a child or an adult. That was a very new issue for A C S. As a result, this summer, we now do have a protocol in place. All of these cases will go to what's called the Office of Special Investigation as opposed to out to the five boroughs. The Office of Special Investigation is a Division of Child Protection office that works, they handle all of the destitute minor cases regardless of whether it's through this process we're talking about here. So we thought that would be a good place for them to go, it's all centralized through O S I. Panina is the supervisor of the borough on the, on the legal side that brings those destitute minor petitions in court. The child protection team is then supposed to talk to the young person in a trauma-informed way, they're trained by my ISLA team, who's also here today, about the, how, the trauma that young people and really anybody who has come from the, over, through the border has faced and what that's like. And they are supposed to try to resolve based on documentation, interviews, whether or not it is indeed a young person, and if they are a child, that, and they seem to meet the definition of destitute, we would have a legal consult with Panina and her team, which she could talk about to bring a case in family court.
And so, because, I know, like you said, it's not a policy, it's kind of some stuff that you guys are putting together, but how do you share that with, like, providers and folks? Because I think there's some disconnect from people even, like, knowing this and even us on the council side.
Sure, I, I have a hard copy, but I'd be happy to share it as an email after this hearing. I believe most of the legal service providers working with these young people have it, but I can make sure they have it.
Okay, thank you. The number, the number of children entering foster care raised, rose 8% in fiscal 2024, driven by an increase in teens entering care under destitute minor position. The growth is largely due to the increase of unaccompanied minors in New York with no family connection. Given the increase in destitute minors in recent years, would the agency consider including this number as an indicator in the M M R, M M R moving forward?
So I'd have to double-check on how you add something to the M M R as a factor, I'm actually not totally sure. I can just clarify a little bit about those numbers, just so you have them. In fiscal year 23, there were 52 placements of destitute children, and in fiscal year 24, it was 121, so an increase of about, not about, of 69 children. The total increase of children entering foster care in those, between those two years was 227, so the increase in destitute minors is about one-third of the overall increase. But I'd have to talk to the data team about how you add something to the M M R.
Hmm, oh, okay, well, you'll get back to us about that, right? Yeah, great. What resources, what resources are made available to youth with destitute minor petitions? How does A C S verify and determine what resources a destitute minor is eligible for?
So a destitute minor in foster care would be treated like any other child in foster care. And so there are children and youth in foster care who need help with their immigration status, who didn't come in as, as destitute, they may have come in as abused or neglected. But for all of the young people, we work with the foster care agencies, they all have an immigration liaison, they are trained repeatedly by my team about how to identify young people who need assistance, immigration assistance, at which point we work to refer them for legal assistance. Destitute minors and all children in foster care are then eligible for, you know, the full array of services we have for children, youth in foster care.
Okay. So you have a breakdown of where the unaccompanied minors are being placed? Are they promptly going to group homes, traditional foster care, or are other types of placements?
All of the above. So where, whenever a young person or child is coming into foster care, we're looking for the best and most appropriate placement. We try really hard to place young people with kin who can be family or friends. We have found that.
Do you have, like, a breakdown of numbers of, like, where that might be, or, like, percentage of, like, are, a percentage of going done with kinship and foster, like?
So I do for the total, for the total system, I know, but we don't, we don't track young people differently based on their immigration status. So I know about 8% of young people are in group homes, and over half go to kinship, and the rest are in non-kinship foster homes, but we don't break it down by their immigration status.
Okay, because I know it's, and this is again, like, I think that the same thing I said with D Y C D, I think that, you know, we know that these young people need, like, additional services, and so I think that we are at a point where we kind of need to take note of, like, who these young people are, because they have specific needs and they have specific things that they need, and so that helps us be able to fight to make sure that the additional services that's needed are going to where they need to be.
Right, I can give you an example of how we're doing that. So my team, which I oversee language access, we provide language access services at the children's center, which is where a number of young people, and most, many young people entering foster care are first in the children's center, not all. If there is a young person at the children's center. If there is a young person at the Children's Center who doesn't speak English, we make sure that they have an interpreter on site for the period of time they're at the Children's Center, which in the summer is many more hours than during the year when they're at school. And I, we monitor the usage of the languages and the cost very closely. And I've been in this role since 2019. Each year that I've been doing this, we've had to increase the amount of funding for language access services at the Children's Center, which we do, so that we could better meet the needs of the children there. So we are definitely following what the needs are of the young people in care.
I still think that we definitely still should need to start thinking about what it looks like to just identify these young people in a real way because of the, the different services that they need and, and supports that they need. And, and I don't, I don't think anything's wrong with it. Like, like I said, I think we can think about creative ways to do that. Providers had no, have, have noted inconsistencies in ACS' decision to admit young people into foster care. Is there formal policy outlining how ACS evaluates whether an unaccompanied minor should enter foster care? If so, could you clarify the criteria used?
So I think we would use essentially the definition of destitute to see if the young person meets the def, the legal definition of destitute or abused or neglected. But I think you're specifically asking about destitute. And so we would look to see that this is a young person under eighteen who is not abused or neglected, but is in a state of want. They don't have a parent or caretaker available to take care of them, either because their parents has died or they're not here in the country. And so we sort of assess all of that. And if we have a young person in need, then we would move to bring them into foster care.
According to providers, ACS only admits a young person into foster care if, if it's directed by SCR, but not if they are referred to by RHY or HERC facility. Would your agency consider revising this policy to address gaps in the care of these youth who have not met SCR narrow criteria, but still require the protection and services offered by foster care?
I will definitely bring back that recommendation. I do think that it is, it's much more efficient on our end when the reports are coming in through the SCR. We have a whole process in place of how to work with young people when they come through that process. And we have teams ready and available twenty-four seven. And that is typically how cases come to our attention. But I've, I've heard people today talk about wanting another way to bring young people in care into our attention. And I think they're referring to what's called an FSS stage, which I don't totally know what that means. But I know that's what they're referring to. And I'm happy to bring back that suggestion and see if there is a way we can do that in a way that makes sure that we are as efficient and responding as quickly as possible.
Yeah, because I don't think that necessarily means that, you know, would do away with SCR. But I think that if we're seeing that folks are having issues with the narrow criteria of what you have to have under SCR, it's not capturing young people. And so we're in the business of helping and supporting young people. So then sometimes we have to adjust to make that happen.
Agree. I do want to add that if the SCR doesn't believe the young person's destitute, we do have the challenge of we need to find that they are destitute, because we can't bring young people in foster, into foster care without legal authority. And we do need to file a petition in family court to be able to keep a young person in foster care as destitute.
But we know sometimes there's examples and it becomes biased because humans have biases. So sometimes we need other options.
Yeah, I, the only thing I would add to that about the SCR call is that that sparks an investigation. And there are situations, I mean, I understand, I think all of us here really understand that this is a a newer thing and that we have to-
Adjust to what's happening currently and haven't been. And we're trying to make something that is a nuance fit into a system that's been pretty archaic. So I'm not really sure why we're not trying to be more innovative and creative about our approach.
I agree with what you said, and I, I do think we are trying to be innovative and creative. And we're, we're adjusting as it's coming up. The point that I wanted to make about the SCR is there are situations where children are abused and neglected. And it may look one way initially. It may look like a destitute child, like these situations where a young person is here without an adult, but there really is more to the story and we want to have the opportunity to-
But that still would have to be an investigation. So I don't, I, I think we're just thinking about different entry points. I'm not, it wouldn't do away with actually doing the due diligence and the work we would still have to do, but it's just another entry point.
Right, under, understood.
You had a question?
I guess it sounds like, it sounds like there's an insistence to use SCR when in fact that's not often the protocol is. Why, why is that? And, and when you mentioned, you mentioned it was more efficient for ACS. That's, that's the wrong approach. It should be what's more efficient for that child or young person. That should be the driving question here.
I completely hear you and agree. And I just want to say, when I meant more efficient, I didn't just mean for ACS, I meant for the young people too. Because the SCR process is how, with the exception of what we're talking about now, all cases come to our child protection teams to respond. So they have processes in place to respond quickly and efficiently, and they know how to do that. And so we're talking about creating a different process for this group of young people. And I actually want to make sure that putting in place something different doesn't actually slow things down. I hear you that you want us to go faster.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're hearing is it's actually slowing down things in, in a not good way. But can I ask one other question in terms of, I, a couple of times you said new. And the truth is, our city has had unaccompanied minors for a very long time. And has had, in 2014, we created all this apparatus, an initiative to support unaccompanied minors. I'm finding it very hard to understand, how is this new to ACS? When we have had this situation going on for a long time.
Sure, it's new to ACS because unaccompanied minors are not in the care and custody of ACS. They're part of the federal government ORR system. And so in 2014, 2015, there was, I believe, a large increase in around 2018, 2019. Those young people weren't coming to ACS. The part that's new to ACS is that there are young people who are children who have come across the border who are not with ORR.
Right.
That's the part that's new. That has never happened for ACS before, where people came into the country as an adult, and now we're later finding out that they may be children. That is new to us.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
And I'll just, I'll just add that I think that much of that change is related to the change in the demographics of immigrant youth arriving to the United States via the southern border. And, you know, historically, and in the past data, as you cited in the committee report, Mexico, Honduras, other Central American countries were the countries of origin of the majority of arriving unaccompanied migrant youth who may not have presented documents indicating that they were an age different than what they are. And so it's a trend, and we're all working and learning together in order to address it the best way that we can.
But totally new to all of you. This is what I'm struggling with.
No, I think it's the volume. And I think that historically, it has happened.
The number of youth receiving Fair Fair services increased from three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two in fiscal 2023 to four thousand one hundred and fifteen in fiscal 2024. This represents a five percent increase in utilization. Are unaccompanied immigrant youth eligible for Fair Fair services? If so, how many are currently enrolled?
I think you mean Fair Futures.
Yeah.
Although Fair Fairs is a great program.
Yes, Fair Futures, sorry.
No problem. But we don't administer Fair Fairs. So all youth in foster care, age eleven to up to twenty-six, although they wouldn't still be in foster care, are eligible to participate in Fair Futures, which is largely coaching and tutoring services. Part of the reason you're seeing the number go up is because we increased the age from twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-six. And so young people enrolled are staying in the program longer, which is great. And so you're starting to see the number go up. Young people who are unaccompanied or immigrant youth are eligible to participate. We are actually in the process of putting together a training for the coaches on immigration so that if for some reason a foster care agency didn't identify that the young person had immigration needs, but the coach did, we can make sure we get those young people help. But otherwise, they're eligible like any other young person.
Does Fair Futures provide coaching and mentorship services in multiple languages? If so, what languages are provided?
So our foster care agencies have access to interpretation services, both Language Line, and we use Accurate for in-person. And so they could use those services for young people and coaches.
With the growing number of youth in foster care and influx of asylum seekers with entering the city, does ACS believe the current budget for Fair Futures is significant to meet the demand?
We are currently assessing the budget for Fair Futures, not just because of immigrant youth, but because of the projections around young people staying in the program beyond longer and also the expansion to juvenile justice.
Thank you. I believe those are all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to circle back on a couple of things. If, does Moya and Owasso or any of the agencies at the DAS currently have or are planning to implement contracts that fund pro se for youth eligible for special immigrant juvenile status?
Not Moya. The new procurement, Moya Immigration Legal Support Centers, provides a great deal of flexibility to providers to complete cases pro se as they see fit and responsible and meeting the needs of the client. However, it's not necessarily deliverable.
Got it, thank you. Now for ACS, DYCD?
Not that I'm aware of. We are working on various concept papers within DYCD and taking into consideration the new needs of the people that we're serving, but not that I'm aware of.
Great. Owasso, do you have any plans to have contracts for that fund pro se work for, for SIGH?
Not at the moment. Apart from the work that we're doing at the AHC.
Which is, which is just that pilot number that you talked about. Are you planning to expand that?
We hope to expand it. We are trying to, right now, we're funded by the state to do asylum, TPS, and work authorization. And so we tried to make efficient use of resources to do the pilot. And now we'll have to figure out how we could resource a scale-up. And one thing I just wanted to clarify, I have the mic, is in SIGH filing, I just want to make it very clear that we file all the necessary paperwork to get SIGH. There's nothing left to be done that we leave the client having to do on their own. We help them fill out and file all the necessary paperwork such that all they have to do is wait for UCIS to make the determination. And we haven't had any rejections there so far. We've had two acceptances and the rest are pending. Just on behalf of the staffing work, I really wanted to clarify, but I respect where your question came from to chair.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I'm sure you're, you're trying your best. But you're, you're, you're here saying under oath that there will be no reason for any of those young people to go to, to be before a court without legal representation, because you have done the whole process.
We have done the whole process, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. In terms of the-
But they do, sorry, just to clarify, they do go to family court to file the initial set of paperwork. We, we help them with that. Then in all of our cases, except for two, that has successfully been filed, and then we help them file with USCIS. So they do go in front of court. But what I'm trying to say is after our work with them is done, all they have to do is wait for USCIS to make the determination. And I am saying that under oath. I feel strongly about the success of that.
Yeah, and, and what if UCIS sends the youth to request further evidence?
Great question, and something we face across all of our service types. We allow those folks to come in across for asylum, TPS, work authorization, and we help them process additional work as, as we can. In terms of scaling up, that's something we'll have to look into. But it, that, that request for additional information is true for our work authorization and TPS filings as well. And we do provide that extra step. Again, I don't want us, we're not competing with full legal representation. If I could wave a magic wand and give full legal representation to everyone, I would do that. But in the resource-strapped world and the high demand, I think we're not, strong net positive to what these folks otherwise could have gotten as well.
So what about appeals of denials?
It's true, at that point, we haven't, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. And I think that there, because we don't do full representation, even for asylum, TPS, work authorization, you know, we, we aim to do the most good for the most people. And I think the best way to look at it is, is this individual, can we help as many people as possible overwhelmingly get these statuses or not? And I think there might be situations that people come across a more complicated situation than we're able to help with, and in that case, we'll refer folks. But I still believe that that person is better served by having filed that application before their twenty-first deadline, such that if they were to get a lawyer, that lawyer has the benefit of, of dealing with that situation rather than starting with someone that timed out and wasn't able to apply. I think from a lawyer's perspective, from a client's perspective, they'd much rather be in a situation where they've applied and maybe there's an appeal they have to work through versus, oh, you're twenty-two, shoot, why didn't you apply? You know, and, and trying to work through a resource that way.
So you don't have a magic wand, neither do I, because things would be very different if that were the case. But nevertheless, what do you think is the appropriate investment for legal services? This pro se model as its pilot, you've already acknowledged has a good number of shortcomings. Parts of the process haven't even been developed, where we know actually happens. What is the investment that we need?
I think-
And why aren't we doing that?
I won't use the word investment, because when it comes to like resource allocation, that's not within my purview. But I will say that I, I hope that we can grow our pilot, and I hope that we can prevent age outs in our system. And I think we are going to take that back and figure out how we can do that, such that at the very least, we're a welcome part of the ecosystem that preserves people's, just like we preserve people's one year with their asylum. We want to preserve people's ability to apply for SIGH in partnership with our great CBOs and everyone else that, you know, has, has showed up to, to answer this crisis.
In terms of the asylum application help center, when they, when they encounter someone at the age of twenty-one without a parent or guardian, what is the protocol that they follow?
At the, so if they are of the age of eighteen, you know, if they're under eighteen, which we haven't seen without a parent or guardian, we would refer them to ACS. That hasn't happened so far. Folks that we see that are under eighteen have a parent or guardian with them. If they're older than that, we would see what they're eligible for, screen them, and they would be able to apply for asylum or authorization or TPS as appropriate. And then again, in the some rare pilot cases, SIGH.
So it's just, it's the standard screening that everyone's receiving?
Yeah, if they are eligible for SIGH, but are also eligible for some of our CBO partners, like if they're nineteen, for example, we would refer them to Safe Passage, which is what the CBO we work with.
So how many applicants have been filed for individuals under the age of twenty-one at the asylum help center?
We received that request. We're working on it. We'll make sure that you and anyone else from the committee that wants to look at that, will get those numbers.
And are, if you're going to tell us how many applicant, how many of the applications are for unaccompanied minors?
We don't track unaccompanied minors as a status, but we wouldn't have filed for someone under eighteen without a parent or guardian.
Okay. I guess one quick question for Moya before we go to public testimony. Why, why are you ending Action NYC model?
As described publicly in the responses to the protest letters received by the city, as well as public comment and question received through the procurement process, the intention is to ensure that immigration legal services are delivered by community-organized organizations and providers. and providers who have the linguistic and cultural competency to serve the needs of the people they're serving, as well as develop a relationship of trust and connect them to a broader network of services beyond immigration legal through navigation and support.
So that is, in your estimation, is not happening at all under this contract?
Currently, there are 18 contracts under Action NYC. Fifteen are Action NYC and CBOs. Services are delivered by community-based organizations. The other three are Action NYC and hospitals, schools, and libraries. Under the new procurement, we'll be providing funding for 25, up to 25 organizations, and those that can demonstrate that they have done work directly in and with community members and the city's various immigrant communities will receive greater consideration.
How much, how much is allocated for capacity building to ensure that not only do they have capacity, but they can appropriately pay for the full level of service they're expected to provide?
The contracts will be valued at $250,000 annual, and organizations are, applicants are able to propose a legal team and a staffing structure that makes sense for the work they're proposing to do and for their organization. For legal capacity building, $400,000 annually will be allocated to a legal technical mentor who will work with each organization individually to help them increase their ability to provide services of greater complexity and at greater volume.
Thank you for that response. How much is OASO funded by the state and for which fiscal year?
We're funded through the end of the state fiscal year. We're funded for our full programming, which comes out to just under $5 million a month.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
We're funded through the end of the state fiscal year, and so if, I should get back to the accurate numbers, but it's around $40 million that we've received so, that we are funded for so far, which will take us through the end of the state fiscal year.
So $40 million?
Mm-hmm.
For the state fiscal year?
And which groups, or which organizations would be...
Oh, and, and which organizations will be funded through those resources?
So that is the state's funding of the asylum application help center's operations since November.
Oh, just for the asylum help center?
Yeah, exactly.
Nothing else? So it doesn't include any legal representation for any of those? How many asylum applications has OASO filed?
I have the exact numbers. So for asylum, we filed $29,000. For work authorization, we filed $34,000, and for TPS, we filed $13,000.
And is any of the resources dedicated to representation when they hear from the federal government around those applications?
It's, it's to help them file the pro se.
Just to file, and they're on their own after that? Got it.
They, yeah. They're able to come back to file their work authorization after filing for asylum, and they're able to come back if they have requests for information for TPS.
How many people have come back?
It's a good question. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I can go see if we can run that.
If you would provide us with a report around how many people are returning, because we know these, these applications and cases are ongoing. And it's concerning that we're, we're doing these application marathons and leaving people on the lurch to proceed a very complicated process. Thank you. I think, I, thank you, thank you all for your testimony today. I think we will now proceed to public testimony. Thank you. Thank you for all being here today. So we now, I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak today, please find an appearance, fill out an appearance card with a Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's oversight hearing topic, resources for immigrant youth who have arrived to the United States as unaccompanied children or on Resolution 576. If you have written a statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the close of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. Now we will call our first in-person panel. Abina Hutchfield? Asane Dieng? Oh, I need some help with this. Rashmani? I don't know if I'm... Please begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Aviles and Chair Stevens, for convening this hearing and for your report and for the opportunity to testify on the proposed resolution. My name is Abena Hutchfield. I'm a child of Ghanaian immigrants and resident of District 40 Flatbush. I am also a policy attorney with the Young Center for Immigrant Children's Rights, an organization that is federally appointed as child advocate for children in ORR custody. I'm the Office of Refugee Resettlement. I'm testifying today in my personal capacity. The Young Center will submit testimony in writing, but I wanted to speak today as a former child advocate and someone who was able to serve in that role thanks to the Unaccompanied Minors Initiative, and has worked with many youth that made the difficult journey to the United States only to spend several months to years in federal custody, fighting deportation proceedings without guaranteed access to an attorney. We know that many of these youth are, as has been discussed here, eligible for special immigration, immigrant juvenile status, and I wanted to address something that has come up through the last panel's questioning, just how little information the state and city's agencies have on children in ORR custody and, and children who are released from ORR custody. This failure to track and understand the needs of kids in federal custody is a big issue that I, I wanted to just address here. I think we are failing kids every day that we don't have, ooh, am I, okay. I, I wanted to just address one, one last, one big gap, which is the role of the family court. I realize that these kids who are SIG eligible in federal custody are not a priority for the city and the state, but ultimately, they will be. Ultimately, they will age out of ORR custody without having filed for a special immigrant juvenile status, without having ever seen a family court judge, and this is something that can be easily fixed. I'm here to just advocate for better coordination between ORR and, and the Office of Moya and ACS to ensure that we understand how many kids are in each agency's care, what their needs are, and that they are all able to access state court, to access the, the federal benefits, really from deportation, work authorization that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Asane Dieng?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's you, Asane?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then Rashmani?
Je suis votre intérêt.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Bonjour. Je suis vraiment très ravi d'être présent ici en face de vous.
I'm very honored to be here today.
Can you speak closer to the mic and pull it, yeah, there you go.
Je suis vraiment ravi d'être présent ici aujourd'hui devant cet ensemble.
I'm very honored to be here speaking to you today.
Je suis venu ici pour parler de mon cas et d'un cas à la large de tous les mineurs qui ont moins de 20 ans.
I'm here to speak about my own case and about all of us who are migrants under 21 years old.
Puisque je suis bien très bien placé pour parler de notre situation qu'on vit actuellement.
I, I think I'm well-placed to talk about our collective situation.
Je suis né le 31 décembre 2003.
I was named, I was born on December 31 of 2003.
Ce qui fait que d'ici trois mois, je suis le plus éligible au tribunal des jeunes.
Et tribunal de quoi?
Des jeunes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, it, which means that in a few months, I will no longer be eligible for family court.
J'ai essayé d'avoir des avocats et je suis parti dans plusieurs organisations pour trouver de l'aide, mais je n'arrive pas.
I've gone from organization to organization and, and seeking legal representation, some kind of aid, and I have been unable to find it.
Certaines avocats nous proposent qu'on les donne de l'argent pour qu'ils, pour qu'on puisse nous aider.
A lot of lawyers are asking for money that I don't have to pay them.
En notre cas, nous sommes pas vraiment en mesure de travailler et de bénéficier de ressources financières pour, 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 pour ce...
And I have no way of getting work or of accessing the services that I need.
Aussi, il manque d'informations, et aussi nous avons des problèmes dans les logements sociaux que nous vivons actuellement.
And also, we have problems in the public housing where we're living and getting any kind of information about how to access help.
Nous voulons aussi faire les études, continuer à faire nos études, mais nous avons tous des problèmes à cause des renouvellements, des changements d'établissements à 60 jours.
And we are, we really would like to continue studies or going back to studying, but we have a problem with the 60-day law and, and where we're going to be ending up.
Oui, parfois, on s'en dit de ville, parfois, on est en Brooklyn, parfois, en Quince, parfois, à Manhattan.
We, we have no address. We rotate between the different boroughs. Sometimes we're in Manhattan, sometimes we're in Brooklyn, sometimes we're in the Bronx, and it's impossible for people to keep track of us or us to keep track of what's going on.
Ce qui ne favorise pas notre adaptation ou la fréquentation des établissements pour pouvoir apprendre l'anglais et de Saint-Egret.
Most especially, it prevents us from enrolling in courses where we could take English lessons, which are vital to us advancing in this society.
Les centres adultes qu'on vit actuellement, nous sommes vraiment exposés à des influences, à des mauvaises influences.
In the shelters where we are currently living, we're exposed to all sorts of dangerous influences.
Pour, aux drogues, à l'alcool.
Drugs and alcohol, violence.
Parfois, on volait nos matériels.
Sometimes our, what little possessions we have get stolen.
C'est vraiment difficile, et nous sommes ravis d'avoir une opportunité de pouvoir s'exprimer devant vous.
And so, we really welcome the opportunity to present this situation to you in hopes that we can get some kind of support.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, thank you for your testimony, and I think you may want to, yeah. Yeah, you would let him know that, thank you for the testimony and sharing your experience. Can I ask, how many shelters have you been in and, in any of those circumstances, do you receive information in language-appropriate ways?
Je suis fréquenté deux, deux shelters.
Et, et dans, dans, dans une ou les deux, est-ce qu'ils vous ont donné des informations de comment accéder des bons services ou dans votre langage?
Oui, oui, oui. On m'a donné des informations. Je suis même parti à Zador. Je suis parti dans nombreuses structures.
Yeah, I, I've been in two shelters, and I was given information about the door, and I did go there.
Mais ils prennent mon numéro, ils vont dire qu'ils vont me rapporter, mais bon, je suis pas encore.
But all they do is they tell me that, they take my number and tell me they'll call, but then I never get a call.
Thank you. We'll follow up with you offline.
Merci.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you. Next panel, we have Alexandra, Alexandra Rizio, Yoldani Mejia, Sarah Nolan, excuse me if I mispronounced your name, Monica Vera, Melissa Maria, and Jeremy Kohoven.
All day, I've been starting this way, but I'm going to go opposite, so please begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Councilwoman Aviles, committee members and staff, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Melissa Maria, and I am a supervising attorney with the Immigrant Protection Unit at the New York Legal Assistance Group. Children are amongst the most vulnerable in our society. Immigrant youth are expected to be responsible for knowing and understanding their immigration cases, the rules and procedures regarding filing with and attending immigration court, filing applications with USCIS, and filing and appearing before state court when required. Each agency or court that an unaccompanied minor interacts with has a different set of rules and requirements, making it extremely difficult for unrepresented youth to succeed in their immigration matters. Children are not represented, children who are not represented often have the most difficulty. NILAC serves hundreds of people on removal a year, including children. We have encountered children who are unaware or unable that they have to properly change their address with the immigration court and receive removal or deportation orders. I personally have encountered children as young as 10 years old who have witnessed their mother murdered in their home country and unaware that they must translate their mother's death certificate and how to properly file things with the immigration court have been ordered removed. I have encountered children who have been hospitalized at the time of their immigration court and have been ordered removed. In these instances, not having a legal representative explain proper procedure and legal claims or even help the child attend court has resulted in a removal order for these children. Having representation makes significant difference in the outcome of a child's claim. Having legal representation also enables immigrant youth to manage the complex judicial system both at the federal level and at the state level and pursue relief available to them. It is critical that the city reinvest in attorneys to provide full, full representation to unaccompanied children. Given that the legal system actually acknowledges a youth's limited capacity, it is essential that the most vulnerable members of society have representation in such proceedings. Full representation for immigrant youth who are the most vulnerable is essential. NILAC has an extensive pro se practice helping immigrants file applications and gain the tools to fight their case. This program specifically does not work with UACs because we know how vulnerable they are and how much more protection they need. Thank you.
Good afternoon and thank you to the City Council Immigration and Child and Youth Committee for inviting testimony. I'm Alexandra Rizio, Managing Attorney at Safe Passage Project. We currently serve over 1,400 children who live in the five boroughs of New York and two counties of Long Island. We're a member of the iCare Coalition. Once we accept a client, we commit to sticking with them until we achieve the best outcome for them, usually a green card. That often takes three to six years due to delays in visa availability and court backlogs. We receive funding from the City Council through the UMFI funding stream. I'd like to emphasize two main points right now. Stagnant City Council funding and housing issues that our youth are facing. While we appreciate the City Council's consistent funding of the iCare Collaborative, no organization within our collaborative has received an increase in funding in five years, despite requests for increases every year and despite the fact that we serve an ever-increasing number of youth with the money we do receive. We have a strong pipeline of attorney and social work candidates and an excellent supervisory structure. And if we're granted additional funding, Safe Passage could put it to use almost immediately by hiring additional staff. I'd also like to emphasize, as has been done in previous panels, that while pro se models of immigration services are useful for certain limited types of services. For example, I do commend the city's asylum application help centers for helping people meet their one-year deadline and for handling age outs, which many of our partner organizations simply can't take on right now. Safe Passage is not accepting age outs for people who will age out in less than nine months. We don't have the capacity to do it. So I do commend the city for working on those types of cases, but that can't be the beginning and end of wide-scale legal services. They need additional assistance after the application is filed and hopefully granted, for example, to get them out of removal proceedings. I also want to address housing. We're facing issues with youth who are being placed in HERC shelters instead of traditional transitional shelters. So we know that there are issues with the 30- and 60-day moving. Clients have gotten sick from the meals served in HERC shelters. They don't have access to CityFEPs if they're in a HERC shelter. They don't have access to vouchers, no social supports. And I heard from our social work team that we were dealing with a young person who's been hospitalized twice after being beaten by guards in one shelter. So we can imagine that that's happening to others as well. And finally, you know, there are placement mistakes. We're working with a client who entered the US prior to March 2022, but it was placed into the HERC system regardless. And it seems that it was just due to confusion regarding the placement assessment. So in short, we have concerns about the type of housing that minors are being funneled into. I mentioned in my written testimony, I didn't get to it right now, we're receiving more referrals from ACS that we can't slot into any existing grant stream. So for UCs who are not in removal proceedings, we don't have a grant stream to funnel them in. So if they're in a affirmative case, we really can't take it. Likewise, if they're aging out, we can't take it. And then I'd just like to emphasize again that we have not received an increase in city funding in over five years. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Idalme Mejia, the Perennial Director at the Children's Law Center, a nonprofit organization that has represented over 130,000 children in New York City Family Courts and New York State Supreme Court integrated domestic violence parts over the past 27 years. Our mission is to advance the rights of children by providing legal representation in cases involving custody, visitation, domestic violence, and child protective matters, to reduce the negative impact of family dissolution and promote well-being and equity for young people. Now, I would like to discuss our work with children under 21 seeking a special immigrant juvenile status, SISH order, and act for your support in this critical work. The SISH designation created by Congress allows certain undocumented children in the foster care or guardianship situations where one of both parents are unable to provide care and protection to obtain lawful immigration status when they cannot safely return to their home countries. In New York City, obtaining a family court order stating it is not in a child's best interest to return home is the essential first step for these young people. Indeed, without such orders, young people cannot further pursue SISH approval from USCIS. In the past several years, we have represented hundreds of young people in these situations, especially in Queens, where SISH petitions have dramatically increased. Working with the Children's Law Center attorneys in different capacities, I have witnessed firsthand the importance of this work. Let me share a few stories from our clients. Their name has been changed for confidentiality. For instance, Evan, age 17, from Guatemala, was forced to leave school and work, thrown out by his mother, physically abused by his mother's boyfriend, and faced threats from gangs. He traveled alone to the US seeking safety, and now he lives with his uncle in New York. Our man, age 20, from Albania, endured violence and persecution due to his family's political support and opposition to Muslim extremism. After escaping persecution, he moved to the US. His parents cut all ties with him and his aunt became his sole support ensuring he could attend college. Currently, only our Queens office can accept assignments on SISH cases, but if we have more resources, we could expense our services to help young people in the Bronx and Brooklyn. Our SISH clients come to us with hope and promise, and they have incredible talent to share. And given the current number of new New Yorkers in our city, there is little sign that this number of young people in need of legal and educational support will decrease in the near future. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share the story.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Nolan. I'm the Managing Director of Kids in Need of Defense, or KINDS, New York office. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify today. We're here also as members of the iCare Coalition. KIND thanks City Council for supporting iCare and providing free legal representation to unaccompanied children. While the numbers of unaccompanied children arriving in New York continue to rise, the city's support for iCare has remained at a standstill for several years. Increased funding is necessary to create a quality, ethical, and sustainable removal defense program for the unaccompanied children who are part of our community. New York City is a top destination for unaccompanied children. Last year alone, almost 4,000 came to reunify with their family members here. Almost all unaccompanied children are served with documents initiating removal proceedings, the first step to deporting them back to unsafe situations. Most have humanitarian immigration relief available to them, but with no right to publicly fund a council and immigration court, the burden remains on them to obtain legal representation, and most cannot afford a private attorney. This has a real cost, as we've heard today. Immigration judges are almost 100 times more likely to grant legal relief for unaccompanied children with legal counsel than those without. KIND's model of holistic services provides this representation and social services coordination to these children. And take the example of Patricia. When she was 15, a gang member in Honduras demanded she become his girlfriend or he would kill her entire family. She fled to the US to find safety. When she arrived, she was faced with the possibility of being deported back to Honduras. KIND took on her case by representing her in removal and helping her apply for immigration relief. In addition, KIND's social services team helped her enroll in health insurance and connected her to a therapist to help her cope with the trauma. Her application for legal status was granted and her removal proceedings were dismissed. But Patricia needed the legal expertise of a state-licensed attorney to represent her in family court and an attorney with immigration experience to understand the specific, complex asylum and SISH proceedings and the removal defense experience necessary to represent her in court. If not for an attorney, she would have faced an ICE attorney, immigration judge, a family court judge, and asylum officer on her own. There remain, as we've heard today, thousands of children who do not have access to this kind of representation or case management support. We hope that after today, the collaboration with the cities and these other agencies here will result in the creation of the robust, well-coordinated delivery system that these children deserve. Thank you for your commitment to ensuring that all unaccompanied children in New York City can achieve their full potential.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Monica Vera and I'm a social services supervisor with KINDS New York office. I have been a social worker, working with unaccompanied children for over eight years. We are also here today as members of the iCare Coalition. As my colleague Sarah just testified, KIND knows that our holistic legal and social services work has provided crucial support to children who have experienced abuse, neglect, and other forms of violence. But more than that, we're trying to ensure that they have a fighting chance to obtain legal status, qualification for services and benefits, and break the multiple cycles of poverty, violence, trauma that they may face. We urge City Council to expand support for unaccompanied minors in a holistic manner so that legal and social services are jointly provided to ensure that these children do not only avoid deportation, but have the resources and tools to thrive as New Yorkers. In addition, we urge City Council to actively engage with community stakeholders such as us as KIND, who have valuable expertise and recommendations on how to serve this unique population of New Yorkers. Let me tell you about Maria, a resilient 17-year-old young woman who fled to the US escaping violence. Since arriving to New York, Maria has been unable to enroll in school and she has trouble obtaining basic needs for her infant child. Recently, she attempted to access a shelter but was denied due to her current pregnancy. That happened just a month ago. As social services supervisor with our KIND office, I partnered with Maria's attorney to help her access basic needs, find childcare resources, and enroll in school. Resources that without she would, it would be impossible for her to navigate just day-to-day life or even her legal case. Like Maria, unaccompanied children are often released from federal custody with little, if any, support. KIND helps our clients establish basic stability so that they can meaningfully participate in their legal case and thrive in other settings. This type of individualized support is only possible if there is dedicated social work and attorneys working together to support each client. KIND's social services includes referrals to many critical city services, such as housing, medical, school enrollment, I could go on, IDNYC. We thank the New York City Council and for all other agencies here today for your commitment to ensuring that all unaccompanied children in New York City can achieve their full potential. We are proud of New York City's role as a national leader in the welcome and protection of unaccompanied migrant children. Thank you so much for your time.
Good afternoon, chairs. I'm Abilis Stevens and the committee. I'm Dr. Jeremy Kohoven, the President and CEO of The Children's Village and Harlem Dowling, two organizations founded in New York City in the 1800s. And we've been working with undocumented children in the United States and across the world since. Let me cut to the chase. All unaccompanied children face the risk of sexual violence and human trafficking, but being undocumented and unaccompanied comes with two additional risks in the United States. Unaccompanied youth are often recruited for the most dangerous work. Work on roofs, work in elevated spaces, work in drains and sewers, cleaning offices and industrial spaces late at night, and debris removal from construction sites and after storms are pretty common. The second risk is many unaccompanied minors and their families incur debt to make the journey. Working and sending money home is their priority. This places them at high risk for indentured servitude and further indebtedness to unscrupulous individuals who offer work and a place to sleep at the high cost of being threatened with reports to authorities. Here are the things that absolutely work. I want to reemphasize that debt bondage is a real issue in the United States. It's not just in far distant places. What works is if eligible, refer unaccompanied children for federal ORR services. It's not perfect, but it's a better place. Conduct family finding to identify one responsible adult relationship. Children do best when with family and people that love them. As you've heard, help file and use all the legal processes available on behalf of children. Here in New York City, provide a place to sleep, wash, and wash their clothes. Housing is a challenge, but our family enrichment centers and drop-in shelters can be a resource. And here's a game-changing idea. Establish a navigator program. This worked for us outside the United States in Iraq. It worked for us with the Affordable Care Act. These programs are relatively low-cost, but when well-designed and implemented with efficacy, stay with young people so that they get the guidance and that the world knows that they've got an adult in their life. People don't target kids that are with adults that love them and care for them.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, everyone, for the work that you're doing on a daily basis. We see clearly, we heard, we need increased funding for these services, but we also have a lot of service issues. Thank you for bringing new ideas or maybe ideas you've been saying for years. But we appreciate all the insight and the work that you do. So thank you so much to this panel.
Our next panel is Alejandro, Alejandro Arine, I think. Jorge Paz. Claudia Valdivia. Lauren Glassman-Shore. Davanu Pierre. And calling again Rashmani Traule, if you are here. Well, we'll start with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Chair Stevens and Chair Abilis for giving immigrant youth a voice today. My name is Alejandro Arias, pronouncing him, and I am a multilingual case manager at the Alifoni Center. Between 2021 and 2023, we have had a 12% increase in youth without citizenship with no extra financial support from NYC. Housing for LGBTQ+ youths, particularly undocumented individuals, has reached a crisis point in New York City's shelter system. LGBTQ+ individuals, especially those over the age of 21 and male identified, face serious obstacles in finding safe shelter, and other organizations are a capacity, forcing them to turn away individuals or take those without asylum case numbers. For LGBTQ+ youth, especially trans youth, the experience in city shelters often includes harassment, violence, and theft. The asylum youth we serve at the Alifoni Center are denied access to DHS. Even though Marshall's House has available beds, they are sent to HERCs but do not feel safe with adults so that they leave and return to stay at drop-in centers where they cannot sleep. How can anyone succeed with this level of instability and fear? Youth need specialized services to thrive. NYC is aware of this, yet youth were left out of the city's plan once again. The youth are unable to receive Section 8 or CityFEPs. The situation is compounded by the lack of access to education, legal support, and employment. Undocumented LGBTQ+ individuals often rely on informal or under-the-table jobs to survive, but even these options are increasingly difficult to secure. The inability to work legally creates increased vulnerability. For many in the community, survival means engaging in sex work or participating in street economies. Discrimination, prejudice, and violence follow them both on the streets and in their workplaces, making survival even harder to maintain. We support Resolution 0576 and asked the state legislature to introduce and pass a workforce development program for new arrivals. The challenges are not insurmountable, but they require more immediate action to ensure that vulnerable LGBTQ+ youth are not left behind for basic human rights. Safe, inclusive spaces are crucial for the well-being and survival of this community. These spaces make NY better. We can't wait. We need resources now. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for calling this hearing and allowing me to speak today. My name is Lauren Glassman-Shore. I'm the Director of the Home Finding and Unaccompanied Children Programs at JCCA. I also serve as the agency's immigration liaison to ACS. JCCA is a provider of long-term foster care services for unaccompanied children funded by the Federal Office of Refugee Resettlement, ORR. First contracted to provide these services in the Bronx in 2017, we expanded to serve Brooklyn and Queens last year. When UCs are placed in our care, we recruit, train, and identify foster families to house the youth while they work towards legal status. The children also receive medical and mental health services, education and acculturation support, and access to legal services. support, and access to legal services. The unaccompanied children we serve have various needs, particularly around education. Many of the children we serve have faced significant wait times in enrolling in international schools in the city and receiving access to community services like tutoring in the language that they speak. We encourage the city to increase investments in educational institutions and programs that will allow the UC to receive access to quality education in a timely manner. The unaccompanied children can only be enrolled in our program with ORR until they are eighteen years old. Many have, at this point, not found permanency or obtained legal relief. As a result, in the last few years, JCCA has partnered with ACS to explore destitute child placements so that they can continue to receive foster care services and all the supports that come with it. To date, JCCA has been able to transition thirteen youth to ACS care to continue working towards legal relief, educational goals, all while residing in a safe, stable home. This process is being replicated among other agencies, and there are currently dozens of unaccompanied children awaiting ACS placement. The process through the Office of Placement, Family Court Legal Services, and the provider agencies requires ongoing collaboration and communication. We believe a simplified process of referring the unaccompanied children to ACS care will ensure that we transfer you safely and securely. In addition, we have faced several challenges in recruiting foster parents for this vulnerable population. The children speak various languages and observe different religions. In many cases, we've struggled with recruiting foster families that practice the same customs and speak the same language. I encourage the city to help with recruiting foster homes that meet the cultural and linguistic needs of the children, and I believe it would be helpful that the city would assist and support in the promotion of these types of programs so that we can identify culturally appropriate foster homes. Thank you for taking the time to consider the needs of unaccompanied children in our city, and together with service providers like JCCA, the city can build an infrastructure that supports these young newcomers towards getting acclimated to their new home. Thank you.
You ready?
Hola, mi nombre es Claudia Valdivia. Soy madre de tres niños no acompañados. Yo viví el proceso.
Hello, my name is Claudia Valdivia. I'm the mother of three.
Hello, my name is Claudia Valdivia. I'm the mother of three children who came alone.
Yo viví el proceso de ver cómo trataban a nuestros niños.
I saw the process of seeing how they treated our children.
Fui una de las personas que logramos que los niños fueran contados y las agencias se empezaran a hacer responsables de ellos.
I was one of the people who started getting in charge to make sure that the agencies were taking care of them.
Las agencias era cuando estaba Donald Trump.
And the agencies were during the Donald Trump era.
El título cuarenta y dos, cero tolerancia.
A title forty-two zero tolerance.
Vivimos nosotros como madres para recuperar a nuestros niños. Yo tardé casi un año para que estas agencias me dieran a mis niños.
And as mothers, we lived in order for to get our children back. I waited almost a year to get my children back.
Nuestros niños tenían que ganarse para que ellos comieran una sopa marucha.
So that they could take us a soup, marucha soup?
Empecé a ser el activismo por una razón de ellas.
I started becoming an activist for one reason.
Porque empecé a ver que no les importaban nuestros niños no acompañados.
Because I started seeing that they didn't care about our children who were not accompanied.
Estas agencias se manejaban más por el dinero y no nos trataban por nombres sino por números.
So these agencies were more concerned, they don't treat us like people but like numbers, they were more concerned with money.
Ahora veo que no tan solo era conseguirles un nombre.
And now I see that it wasn't all about giving them a name or finding them a name.
Nuestros niños están sufriendo, no hay suficientes escuelas bilingües.
Our children are suffering and there are not enough bilingual schools.
No hay para los niños de capacidades especiales.
And for children with specific with special needs?
Que vienen con traumas.
There are none for children with special needs who come with trauma.
Las agencias, en vez de preocuparse porque los niños estuvieran bien.
And the agencies, instead of worrying so that the kids were okay?
Ellos se cuestionaban a juzgarnos, a nosotros, los padres.
They would judge us parents.
Por qué los dejamos venir solos.
Why we let them come alone.
Yo vine en mi caso no porque yo quise.
In my case, I didn't come here because I wanted.
Abandonar a mis hijos. Llegué a este país con las costillas rotas.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do it because I wanted to, but I came to this country with broken ribs.
Aparte de eso fueron delgentes.
And they were intelligent.
Me perdieron, me perdían las huellas de migración. No me la perdieron una vez. Me las perdieron como tres veces y eso.
They, they, okay, they, they misplaced my fingerprints in immigration, and they did it like three times.
Y eso tardan que te las vuelvan a dar.
And it takes time, sixty days for them to give them back to you or to allow you to put your fingerprints again.
Cuando yo vi las agencias aquí y decían que eran responsables y que tenían un plan.
So when I see the agencies here and they kept saying that they had a plan, that they were responsible.
No tienen nada porque todos los recursos que yo he recibido.
They don't have anything because all the resources I have received?
Son por mí misma.
I have found them myself.
Ahora, no tiene mi niño, lleva cinco años aquí.
My children, my, my child has been here for five years.
Él quiere ser piloto aviador.
He wants to be a pilot.
Ha acabado su escuela.
He finished school.
Pero ahora yo estoy triste.
But right now I'm sad.
Por qué no puede ejercer lo que él quiere por no tener un estatus migratorio.
But because he cannot do what he wants because he doesn't have an immigration status.
Y creo que es importante.
And I think it's important.
Son niños, merecen ser igual que otros niños trastados.
They are children, they deserve to be just like the other children.
En mi caso, mis niños corrieron con la suerte de tenerme a mí.
And in my case, my children were lucky to have me.
Y quién poderlos anotar a la escuela.
That I could register them in school and.
Buscar abogados de agencias.
Find lawyers through agencies.
Pero hay muchos niños que no corren con su suerte.
But many children do not have their luck.
Entonces, pido de corazón.
So I ask from the bottom of my heart.
Que ustedes que tienen el poder.
That you who have the power.
Ayuden a nuestra juventud.
Help our youth.
Porque son niños que no están aquí porque quieran.
Because these are children who are not here because they want to.
Son niños que vienen oyendo de violencia.
They come fleeing violence.
No están seguros en su país.
They're not safe in their country.
Y creo que tenemos este país, este estado.
And I think that this state.
Tiene la estatua de la libertad que es la esperanza.
Has a statue of liberty which represents a hope.
Es por eso que ahora.
Why right now.
Creo yo que es, es hora que nos escuchen, ya pasó mucho tiempo y nadie.
It's time that we are heard, a lot of time has gone by and.
Se ha interesado por nuestros niños.
Nobody has really been interested in our children.
No es, no es justo que aquí mismo nosotros les volvamos a cortar sus sueños y sus alas.
It's not fair that here we cut their dreams again.
Es lo único que les pido, gracias.
It's all that I ask from you, and thank you.
Un gusto de que me escucharon.
And it's a pleasure that you heard me.
Hello. Thank you, members of City Council. Alex Avila and Stevens, thank you for having us here. My name is Jorge Paredes, and I'm the community organizer for Misteca, a community-based institution that has proudly saved the Spanish-speaking community of Sunset Park for more than twenty years. Over the years, we have witnessed the struggles and the resilience of many of migrants, especially young migrants who have arrived unaccompanied. Claudia is part of a promotoras program which empowers community members to engage in leadership opportunities in their communities of specifically Sunset Park. The testimony that Claudia highlights, highlights many of the frustrations that parents of unaccompanied migrants face in the city. However, as you heard today, there's another perspective of those migrants that do not have the privilege of having someone that receives them. In our daily work, we engage with young people from countries like Venezuela, Guatemala, Ecuador, Honduras, and many more, youth who have been, who have made a difficult decision to leave their homes in search for a better life. And know, and one of the most present issues that we have noticed among this youth is the impossible balancing act of both going to school and also having to work. The reality is that many of them are not only supporting themselves but also contributing to their families back home, and in many cases, they're responsible for paying rent and buying food here in the United States. This dual burden places an immense strain on their abilities to succeed academically and socially. Without a safety net, this young, this youth are forced to grow far too quickly, often sacrificing their education for immediate financial needs. Unfortunately, the systems or poor systems are inadequate, leaving them vulnerable and without the necessary resources for successful integration into our society. At Misteca, we share many of the frustrations that the committee heard today and that were shared earlier in the panel. Just as then, we recognize the importance of implementing comprehensive mental health services as well as enhancing access to legal resources. However, we want to emphasize the importance of developing income earning opportunities as well as facilitating mentorship programs. We have a lot of community members that complain that they're not eligible for the student employment, for the Student Youth Employment Program, something that is widely shared in the, in the DOE, in the Department of Education. Similar to organizations like Africana, Misteca has taken the burning of supporting these young migrants and creating programming that helps them adjust to the country. And although we recognize the efforts of agencies such as Moya, we still sending, we still see many gaps that leave these youth in difficult situations. We hope that as this committee looks into the resources available for unaccompanied migrants, that we can create better connections between agencies and CBOs to become stronger and provide more resources to the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
God bless America. I'm Pierre from a French-speaking country, but as I do love America, I want to say it in English. Yes, I used to come here to your neighbor, Canada, because I work for Canada in Benin. I was director of a place called Place du Québec, and I was the director, and my life was in danger because one day, the son of our president came to me and said that he wanted to take the place, and all my thirty-five employees, we were sent away. And they gave me only three days' notice to leave the place. Then I was compelled to leave everything, to sell my house and to bring my kids, my daughter and his, her young brother, to move to America. But what I want to know, if you come from Benin, from a country where the currency is very weak, CFA to dollars, I thought I was rich, but the money I brought here, in a few weeks, all disappeared like smoke. Then I have now problem to take care of my children, and I thank America because my children, my daughter and his, her brother, they are schooling, they go to school. And do you have a program that can help me before I get my work permit? Because I apply, I am asylum seeker, and as I know that America is a country of law, a day after my arrival, I went to a lawyer to apply for asylum, and my case is on good track, and I'm sure that with the evidence, all the documents I submitted, I'm sure to be approved. But before that, before I can work, because I have a master degree in program management, I have also Canadian degree, and for that, I'm sure that I will get my work permit. But what can I do before I can work? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for sharing your story. And gracias, Claudia, para compartir su historia. Lo siento mucho que he tenido esa experiencia con los niños. Espero que ves que estamos aquí porque tenemos mucha esperanza de hacer mejor para todos, dignidad para todos, para tus niños y para los, y los, los que vienen, no? I just want to say thank you again for sharing your story, and I just expressed sorrow for some of what Claudia shared in her testimony of what happened to her children, but I think what you all demonstrate here and what we've seen is there is a lot, a lot of people in the city, right? City agencies who are aspiring to do better and to make sure, to ensure dignity for all. And when we know something isn't working, that we shift and make it work because we all deserve that. So thank you all for your testimony today and for the work that you are doing. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So we have last Rashmani Traule, Christopher Leon Johnson, and Sharon Brown Jeter.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Alexa Vilas and Chair Leader Stevens. Christopher Leon Johnson here. So I want to make this clear that I heard these stories of these people. This is sad that their kids are going through stuff, even the kids themselves that's going through stuff. I was at the press conference this morning impromptu, supposed to be for the City YES hearing. I say no to the City YES, and I saw a press conference with these African teen stories about what they're going through in the shelters, and I found out they wasn't, they are not like the current migrants that coming over the border. Also, it had nothing to do with that. The reason this is happening is because Adams. Adams, Adams is trying to prioritize these, these people that just come over the border, just recently come over the border because of the Biden situation, and he's trying to appease them really more now because he's trying to stay out of jail. He's indicted, he needed to resign. The reason, I don't know not why not, one of these nonprofits, including Misteca, didn't call for the resignation of Eric Adams because the reason this is happening to these, these children here is because of Adams. If these children, these migrant children here were the migrant children that just came from the border on the Biden executive order, he would have been helping them, helping these people out, but because they've been here over five, ten, three, four, five, ten years ago, he's not going to help them out. And the problem is that, look, these people here, like, they are trying to do the right thing, they came here legally, and Adams don't care about that. He's helping the people out that jumped the line. So the root of all this is Adams. People, these nonprofits, including Misteca, should have been on here, called for the resignation of Eric Adams. That's the truth. So I stand for migrants, I love them all, but Eric has to go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We will now turn to virtual panelists. For our virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set a timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. And our first and only virtual panelist is Jenny Spector.
You may begin.
Hi there. Thank you for, I really want to thank two committee chairs for holding this hearing because it's, obviously, we saw it as incredibly important information that has been basically not out in public in the right way. I'll just introduce myself. I am a social worker and a longtime immigration advocate, but when there was the large influx of recently arrived migrants and asylum seekers, I stepped up in a big way to help to organize mutual aid, mutual aid response here in Brooklyn where I live. And I live, I'm in Fort Greene, and you probably know there are three migrant shelters in Clinton Hill, which is the next neighborhood for me, on Hall Street and in that area. And in November of last year, we started to see a growing number of these young migrants in, in these adult migrant shelters. And so I, I think that something that hasn't been brought out in today's hearing is that, well, we clearly saw from the response from the agency, they have these yawning gaps, right, in, in what they are providing for this population and what they're not providing. And so we, as, you know, mutual aid groups have stepped up in a very large way to supply, provide support for these young people. There, the gaps, and you know, you can see that there is no, no, you know, streamlined. The gaps, and you can see that there is no streamlined response to provide them with the support and the care that they need and that they deserve, right? So first of all, I immediately saw that the major problem was that there is no mechanism when they go to the Roosevelt to request shelter for them to be placed...
Thank you. Time has expired.
So I will submit the rest of my testimony in writing. And I also just want to say there's been very little, there's been almost no talk about education today, which is a huge piece. So we'll be helping to get written testimony submitted from people who have, you know, kind of been really focusing on that. There's a very large mutual aid response and network who have been really providing most of the help for these young people. And I'm happy to, you know, be available, you know, going forward to kind of help to flesh out the picture more.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jenny. We look forward to your testimony. Thank you for the work. We are well aware that mutual aid groups have been on the front line of welcoming our newest New Yorkers and supporting New Yorkers in general. So we appreciate that work, and we will certainly follow up. We appreciate your testimony today. Thank you. Here we go. So we've now heard from everyone who signed up to testify. I don't think we've missed any one. We're good, right?
Yeah.
Let's see. Oh, if we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the Sergeant at Arms table and complete a witness slip now. If we've inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom, and a member of our staff will call on you in the order of hands raised. So seeing no one else, I would like to note again that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And with that, we call this meeting to a closure.